Friend of mine was at a dinner party a little while ago. And came back from my just came back and it was chocolate chip cookies. She ate the chocolate chip cookie and turned out it was dope.
Oh, no.
Did you know that I told?
Oh, no.
You know what? Something similar to what I was trying to say. I had a try on a place that has a bird.
Well, as a person, he's got this really bizarre.
And I went like this. I went. Ah. When you're just not thinking about it, right? Because it was the first time I should've heard him.
He was thinking about it. He was very fast. He was, he was the opposite best. He was probably expecting something. It's good.
He doesn't. It's not good when your mind is always telling you that you're doing wrong.
No, he's a real. Let me go with the bus.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was made water. My breath was.
He's the one that was supposed to do this. No patient. As the crow flies as close.
No, I thought he was.
So anything to do with.
Does he know there's a meeting on Thursday, though? Does somebody call him or remind him? Honestly.
I bet he went to like.
That's it? I think.
But it wasn't on a Thursday.
Peter just said he's watching from.
So are you running a reason for that? Are you thinking of putting off your meeting?
Totally up to council. Counsel choice to do it or not.
Well, just because these one person is.
Yeah. Totally up to council. Generally, big applications with a lot of new information. Give council, council a chance to deliberate on it. We'll see, we'll see how the public turn it off.
They have to come up with a new contract.
The doggies are here.
It emphasizes the tenuous relationship in the contract. It emphasizes the. Because the relationship.
Underneath the flashing.
The doors have a hair too.
So you could have, like the ones before.
Here today, gone tomorrow.
Outside my front door. Sneak up on me with a can of rain and roll a tape. Spray it into the hole in the table.
And the others.
Then run like hell. Do you have any friends outside?
Okay.
That's okay. At least you can imagine from now on.
Kelsey? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special business meeting of the District of Squamish for September 6th. Halifin squolum quis te lectum et classico homish awayo meo. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. There is one item or potentially two items on the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda from council. Moved by Council Ray, seconded by Council Blackman Wolf. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. At the beginning of every public hearing, I need to read this legislated public statement. So bear with me. This public hearing is convened pursuant to Part 14, Division 3 of the Local Government Act to allow the public to make representations to council respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaws. District of Squamish Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 2500, 2017. Amendment Bylaw Garibaldi Springs Number 2613, 2018. And District of Squamish Zoning Bylaw Number 2200, 2011. Amendment Bylaw Garibaldi Springs Number 2614, 2018. Everyone present shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views known. However, it is important that the remarks be restricted to the matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Members of council may ask questions following the presentations. However, the function of council at a public hearing is to listen rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. In considering the proposed bylaw, council has received documents which may influence its decision. These documents are available for review and comment and have been included as part of the planning department report, or if received later, handed out at the meeting and included in the public hearing package. If any documents are submitted during the hearing, please feel free to review the document during the hearing by asking staff. Members of the public shall maintain order and quiet and shall not applaud or interrupt any speech or actions of members of council or any other persons addressing council. I'll now call on the planning department to introduce the bylaws.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jonas Von Nischke, Director of Community Planning. And with me today is Susan Stratus, who is the planner on file. Dave Mero, who is the Director of Major Projects. Gary Buxton, the General Manager of Community Planning. And Linda Glanday, our CIO. I will turn it over to Susan Stratus to present the proposal.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the public. We have a presentation to just give you an overview of the project and the proposed bylaws. The purpose tonight is to both give you an overview of the development application for the Garibaldi Springs site and to review some additional information that has been submitted since first and second reading. So just looking at the background to this project, it initially started in 2016. The previous OCP and zoning applications were submitted at that time along with a number of technical reports. Two open houses were held in 2016. And moving into 2017, there were a number of council and committee reviews as well as additional public input sessions. In 2018, again, at the beginning, dealing with the previous application, first and second reading of the bylaws was given. A public information meeting was held. And in April of 2018, there was a public hearing, followed by a report for third reading. And at that time, the project, the bylaws, were defeated by council. The applicant submitted a revised new development application in May of this year, May 22nd, held a public information meeting on June 25th. Council gave first and second reading to the new bylaws on July 3rd. And tonight, we're at the public hearing. The technical reports submitted for the new development application, there have been four environmental reports, the required bioinventory assessment, a habitat balance report, fisheries habitat compensation, a separate report dealing with the ponds that council requested more information on, and an additional email submission regarding the Pacific watershed habitat. There has been a third-party review of these environmental reports by a consultant, Enviro West Consultants, who was hired by the district. A traffic impact assessment has been submitted. Again, this was an update of a previous report. And water and sewer system analysis, geotechnical report, and flood hazard assessment remain the same. Those were original reports that do not require updating. So the proposed development consists of 75% in green ecological reserve. There are four proposed housing parcels in blue, A, B, C, and D. Those constitute just about 22% of the site. The park, which is the area in orange, is 1.2 hectares, 2.6% of the site. The clubhouse site, 3%. There was previously a parking lot to be proposed on Newport Ridge Drive that's been deleted from this application. So the total site area is 48.3 hectares. The changes from the previous plans are mainly, there has been an increase in the ecological reserve. It was previously 32.8 hectares. And the residential has decreased. It was previously 12.8 hectares. Now it's down to 10.5. And some minor changes in the Newport Road dedication. The main changes that have taken place are in Parcell C and D. The previous plan had a fairly extensive amount of residential development in Parcell C that had a road running back to Tantalus Drive. And Parcell D was somewhat smaller. In the new proposal, the, all of this residential development has been removed in favor of ecological reserve. Parcell C is much smaller. And Parcell D has been increased in size. Newport Ridge Drive is also shorter in the new proposal. Previously, the road was going to be constructed for a further distance plus an additional right-of-way dedication was proposed. The OCP designates the majority of the site as parks, recreation corridors, and recreation. The hotel and clubhouse parcels are designated highway and tourist commercial. And the surrounding areas in yellow are designated as residential neighborhood. Further to the east, the OCP designates the land as future residential neighborhood. And this is the new OCP that was recently adopted. The OCP also has a growth management schedule. And all of the areas within the red outline are considered to be the growth management, within the growth management boundary. The Garibaldi Springs property is here. And the rationale for the properties being included in the growth management boundary is being adjacent to existing development and adjacent to existing services. So the development concept, just looking at it in a bit more detail, there are 310 units proposed as a maximum. Don't know if it will turn out to be exactly that number. There are four parcels, as I've mentioned, with parcel A at the top. The development is proposed to be phased beginning at the north end. Parcel A is to be limited to 60 units. And the others are shown as approximate amounts, 105 for parcel B, fairly small, parcel C, 26 units, and 119 in parcel D. So the overall density is relatively low, 29 units per hectare, which is roughly 12 units per acre, which is just slightly above single-family density or the low end of townhouse density. The majority of land, 78%, as I've mentioned, is to be dedicated to district ownership for ecological reserve and parkland. And that is all the green areas and the blue pond areas that are shown on the map. I won't read through this, but this table just demonstrates that there's a mix of housing types. There are some cottages, one-story cottages in parcel A, duplexes and townhouses. Townhouses are the majority of units on the site, 76%. This housing mix includes 18 affordable rental housing units that will be secured in a housing agreement with the district. Those are located on parcels A and B. And their proposed range from 750 to 990 square feet. The applicant is also proposing 18 lockoff suites, again, to be secured in the land development agreement within parcel B to contribute to the affordability. Parcel A is the parcel that the applicant has spent the most time on. This drawing is from their original submission, showing the 60 units with the 60, I'll get onto actually a more detailed plan, single-story cottages. And it includes a trail through the site to Dowood Road and includes a play area here. The trails through the strata parcels and any park areas will, by covenant, be available to the public to use. Just looking at parcel A in a bit more detail, prior to the public hearing, we did have some correspondence with residents of Rockridge Place. And the applicants and I did meet on-site to take a look at some of the concerns. The, previously, the applicant had spent some time kind of looking at the development from the uphill perspective here, from Dowood Road. And that ended up with the design with single-story cottages here. But the Rockridge Place residents have raised another, a different range of concerns, which are primarily related to potential overlooking of their housing units and possible loss of vegetation here and potential retaining walls needed for the, to support these units here. They're concerned that the, in order to create flat rear yard units along these units, it's going to push the limit in terms of retaining walls. Those are valid concerns. We did look at those properties on-site and added some clauses to the land development agreement to try and address these. But I think in terms of the bylaws that are in front of us tonight, these types of issues are development permit issues that you resolve at the time of development permit when you've got a lot more detailed information. And in particular, the slope conditions here need a thorough geotechnical investigation to know what's needed and what's possible there. And that will determine the ultimate sighting and size of the units here. The applicants have indicated there is room to move this internal road back a little bit. There's kind of a bench here. The, the property slopes down. And through the length of the property, the slope conditions change from property to property. So there actually isn't a single solution that fits all criteria. And that's exactly what the development permit process is intended to address. So in the land development agreement, we've included clauses regarding the need for the geotechnical report, an ARBRIS report. And we'll, we'll have to review all of those issues at this time. You know, they're not, I agree that there are things, considerations there we need to look at in more detail. So just looking at the special conditions that have been put into the land development agreement, 60 units maximum, height-restricted landscaping within that building setback on the north property line, a 1.5-meter maximum mature height for the landscaping. The single-story cottage units with a maximum six-story height is already in the zoning bylaw, but we've also listed that in the land development agreement. We've defined through this map the areas where the townhouses will be in the center, which can go to your typical 10.68-meter townhouse height. And define the area where the two-star, two, two-unit dwellings, duplexes with a nine-meter height will be permitted. And again, have defined what's, what we're calling the no-go zone. Between the south property line and the top of bank is a minimum five-meter area. And again, listed that a geotechnical report is needed to confirm the setbacks from top of bank and any stabilization measures. The land development agreement also requires barrier planting and/or fencing two meters uphill from the top of bank. And this is to prevent people from going into their yards and overlooking the downhill properties. I would mention that kind of overlooking is a concern for some properties more than others. It's not a universal condition along that southern edge. And the ARBRIS report will recommend any tree vegetation protection, tree thinning, or replanting of those sloped areas that may be required. And minimizing retaining walls is listed in the LDA. There are already provisions in the zoning bylaw for limiting the height and spacing of retaining walls. So moving on to parcel B, which is the, a larger development area with varied topography. It includes 18 affordable rental townhouses, two-story duplexes, some of which have grade level lockoff suites. And the townhouses are typically three stories here. And it also includes an active play area, which is located here. And again, will be publicly accessible. Parcel C is accessed via Newport Ridge Drive and does have a fairly large protected area here on the, on the west side of it as well as on the east side. So it's a very small development pod accessed from Newport Ridge Drive. Parcel D is where there's some, you know, a fairly significant concern, significant departure from what this looked like before. There are two ponds existing currently, one of which is a, an aesthetic pond, the other is a fisheries compensation pond. So the ponds are to be filled, and there is a riparian area that connects those two ponds. It will be partial infill of Pond 5, and I'll get to this in a bit, in a bit more detail. Approximately 119 townhomes are proposed here. The project comes with a proposed trail network with 3.1 kilometers of public trails which link both the development pods through the site and link people back to the Tantalus Road and hotel area. The purple area is a fully accessible trail. In addition to the 3.1 kilometers of public trails, there are 1.9 kilometers of strata trails, which are the red and green areas shown in the development parcels that these link to. And again, those are to be publicly accessible. The final trail locations, surfacing materials, and lighting will be developed during the environmental DP process because those have to be looked at on a very detailed basis. In addition, there are off-site trail improvements and connections proposed, which formalize connections to some of the trails to the east that are already, I would say, fairly well-used in the community. And provides a, fills in the missing piece of the corridor trail along Tantalus Road and provides extensions to the Wonderland Trail and connects to the existing portion of that. So those are improvements that the applicants are proposing as part of their community benefit package. Just looking at the public access, we've been provided with this, provided by the applicants with this summary, which on the left side shows how much of the site is currently publicly owned or publicly accessible. 0% is the quick answer there. On the right-hand side, when you add together all of the different trails and public land that I had just described, the public access area jumps to 86% under this proposal. So looking at the maintenance costs of the ecological reserve and the park areas, Polygon under the requirements with the federal fisheries will be required to maintain the ecological reserve for the first five years. The district will maintain the community parks and trails. And after five years, the ecological reserve will also be the district's obligation. The park funding is intended to be paid for through the tax base. Polygon will cover any outstanding amounts until the development is fully built out. So they have a decreasing share as the units are built out and the tax base share increases until the development is fully built. The preliminary cost estimates from the district staff are $150,000 per year for park maintenance, and that excludes the ecological reserve. But the information from staff is that the ecological reserve is actually a fairly minor part of park maintenance, even within your existing parks. Park costs really accrue with your active Class 1 parks that are heavily used and have lawns and so on that require maintenance. The $150,000 a year is, represents 3.5% of the current parks and recreation service budget. All of these obligations are to be secured in the land development agreement. So moving on to parking, the residential units and visitor parking will be provided to bylaw standards. There have been no variances requested there. Public parking is approximately 150 spaces. Previously, this was 225. There has been a change in information on Tantalus Road. Previously, we were advised that we're going to be 110 spaces. This has now been brought down to 100 spaces as their engineering consultant has looked at the need for bus stops. We don't know yet whether PC Transit wants additional bus stops, but it does bring the effect of parking down if those are provided. Forty spaces will be provided in the existing clubhouse parking lot, of which five will be assigned to the daycare. An additional 10 spaces are provided on the strata roads. One of the reasons these parking spaces have been reduced was there was a lot more strata road development in the previous configuration. So looking at the community benefits, I'll just deal with the ones under the new application in the right-hand column there. The developers are proposing to meet the district CAC interim policy and pay $6 a square foot on the estimated construction, which yields 3.07 million. They are proposing to construct 18 affordable housing units, 5.8% of the total, with a value of 2.5 million. And I won't read through all of these. The off-site trails, daycare, public park improvements, public art, excuse me, and the ecological reserve improvements add up to a total of 11.9 million. So that 11.9 million represents approximately $25 per square foot, which is well above the $6 per square foot in the interim policy. The environmental review reports have identified that this is a very complex site with high environmental values for many species of amphibians, reptiles, birds, and mammals. All the water courses are fish-bearing. Provincial and federal agency environmental approvals are not required at the rezoning stage. I think we've had a bit of discussion on this, but they will be a necessary part of the approvals if the project moves forward to environmental development permit stage. Any changes to riparian habitat or ponds require approval and authorizations from DFO and/or the province as part of that environmental DP process. And the drawing on the right indicates the four major creeks, Newport Creek, No Name Creek, Thunderbird Creek, and Megan Creek, each of which have additional riparian areas adjacent to the, to the creeks and their tributaries. A number of environmental enhancements and approaches to the project have been outlined in the reports. The primary target is to locate development in previously disturbed areas of the golf course. These would be mainly the greens and also the fair, oh, sorry, the fairways and greens and the trails of the golf course. The applicant proposes to re-vegetate riparian and non-riparian habitats. And again, this would be mainly the golf course greens that are not currently providing much essential habitat. They would create new woodland habitat, enhance the overall fish habitat through a number of techniques, which include culvert removal, bridge removal, improvement or replacement of bridges, and channel enhancement. Wildlife crossings under the roads will be installed, fencing of critical areas to prevent people and their dogs from accessing some of the critical areas. And stormwater management are all part of the environmental enhancements proposed. The estimate of the current naturalized and forested areas on the site, which is basically the areas that are not used for golf course development, is approximately 56%. And I think in this drawing on the left, whoops, pardon me. In the drawing on the left, you can see the impact of the golf course development through these white areas that have been cleared for golf course, golf course use, especially in the central area. Under the proposed development, approximately 72% of the site will be naturalized and forested. So there's a fairly significant change, particularly in the central part. And part of the environmental strategy is to create as much contiguous habitat as possible. And I think the contiguous nature of the habitat is. The applicant proposes to re-vegetate riparian and non-riparian habitats, and again, this would be mainly the golf course greens that are not currently providing much essential habitat. They would create new woodland habitat, enhance the overall fish habitat through a number of techniques, which include culvert removal, bridge removal, improvement or replacement of bridges, and channel enhancement. Wildlife crossings under the roads will be installed, fencing of critical areas to prevent people and their dogs from accessing some of the critical areas, and stormwater management are all part of the environmental enhancements proposed. The estimate of the current naturalized and forested areas on the site, which is basically the areas that are not used for golf course development, is approximately 56%. And I think in this drawing on the left, whoops, pardon me. In the drawing on the left, you can see the impact of the golf course development through these white areas that have been cleared for golf course use, especially in the central area. Under the proposed development, approximately 72% of the site will be naturalized and forested. So there's a fairly significant change, particularly in the central part. And part of the environmental strategy is to create as much contiguous habitat as possible, and I think the contiguous nature of the habitat is evident in that second drawing. So just numerically, there is loss of riparian and aquatic habitat as a result of this development, mainly through road development. So the losses and gains are shown in this table and in the, pardon me. Because of the loss of these habitats, there has to be considerable habitat replacement, often at a two-to-one ratio. So the gains are 49,000 square meters of riparian habitat, just over 21,000 square meters of aquatic habitat. The net increase is 1.75 hectares of riparian habitat and 1.06 hectares of aquatic, and those are both roughly a 25% increase over the previous proposal. So just looking a bit more closely at what is involved in the post-development habitat that is proposed. At the north end of the site, the development sites are shown in orange. The existing pond remains, the existing ponds here remain, but they are supplemented, and I realize the stripes don't show up too well, but they are supplemented by both riparian compensation in the striped areas and aquatic compensation in these blue areas. There is a small impact to this pond where the emergency access road that functions as both a trail and emergency access runs fairly tight between the Rockridge Place Homes and the pond. That will be an area that will have to be compensated and is accounted for in the figures I just showed you. At the south end of the site is where there is more significant change. The ponds Five and Six, which consist of both, one is an aesthetic pond and the other is a compensation pond, will be changed considerably. The aesthetic pond will be completely infilled, and the compensation pond, number Five, is proposed to be partly infilled. The compensation area is this broad area, basically in front of the hotel, surrounding the Megan Creek wetlands, and this is where, I guess, the most significant improvement to the project is proposed. There is both riparian compensation areas in green, aquatic compensation areas shown in blue throughout the site, and there is, in yellow, non-riparian vegetated areas, and in this gray area, forested areas that will be replanted. So this is how the area in front of the hotel and down to the southern part of the property is proposed to be developed. We've had a number of submissions regarding the Pacific Water Shrew Habitat and Cascade Environmental, as the QEPs for the project did provide additional information on that, and pointed out that although Environment Canada has very broadly mapped the critical habitat for the Pacific Water Shrew, which is roughly the area within 100 meters of Thunderbird and Megan Creek in that central area we just looked at, this critical habitat has not been refined to reflect the onsite habitat features and includes both fairways and vegetated riparian areas. The QEP has advised that the Federal Species at Risk Act doesn't actually apply to private lands in the absence of an emergency order, and their communications with Environment Canada have established that the fairways that are within that 100 meters do not contain critical habitat and would not be part of the Pacific Water Shrew Recovery Plan. The provincial best management practices also recommend leaving 100 meters of protected habitat where possible. And as I mentioned before, the development is focused on previously disturbed areas and forested areas greater than 30 meters from the watercourses, and extensive restoration of golf courses, wetlands, and riparian vegetation is proposed. All of these senior agency requirements and the development proposal will be reviewed in detail at the environmental DP stage, and any requirements of Environment Canada or the province would have to be met before any approvals are granted. There is also additional information about the ponds. Council, at the last council meeting, requested some additional information, and the Cascade Environmental submitted a brief report on this. The connecting wetland and ponds were originally created as part of the compensation and mitigation for the golf course development. Pond Six is aesthetic only and was not proposed to function as fisheries habitat. The fish sampling over the years has indicated that these ponds have not performed as coho rearing habitat, mainly due to the elevated water temperatures, which also have had a negative effect on Megan Creek since they're connected. The treed and wetland swamps that were developed as part of the original golf course compensation are functioning adequately. So the proposal is to infill parts of Pond Five and all of Pond Six to decrease the water temperatures and improve that downstream fish habitat in Megan Creek. And the proposed fisheries compensation plan also proposes additional treed swamp area to provide overwintering and rearing habitat, as well as habitat that is suitable for amphibians, including the Pacific Water Shrew. So I'll just move on to surfacing and access and turn it over to Dave Marrow.
Yes, so with respect to surfacing and access, the site will be serviced-
Dave, can you just introduce yourself?
I certainly can. Dave Marrow, Director of Major Projects with the district. Can everyone hear me okay?
I don't think so.
Can everyone hear me okay now? I will try to speak a little closer, if that's better.
That'd be great.
Sorry about that. As I was saying, the site will be serviced with water and sanitary sewer by existing municipal services located on Dawood Drive, Tantalus Road, and Newport Ridge Drive. All of the internal roads and services proposed for the development are proposed to be strata-owned and maintained. Vehicular access to the site will be provided at two locations, one to the north at Dawood Drive and one further to the south at Newport Ridge Drive. And as Susan mentioned, there will be an emergency access provided to the north of that northernmost pond where Susan's pointing, and that currently is a path that is used, and essentially, we just need to expand that path a little bit. And for the most part, the majority of the time, it will act as a multi-use path for pedestrians and bicycles. In the event of an emergency, bollards can be removed and emergency vehicles can access the site if no other access is available. Newport Ridge Drive, to the south of the site, will be extended to the east only to the point where it needs to service Parcel C and D. However, the development will be aligned such that it doesn't preclude extension of that further to the east in the future if it is required. As far as traffic is concerned, it is recognized that this area generally in town has some traffic issues, and as a result of that, it's also recognized that a broader traffic assessment needs to be completed for this area to consider future growth beyond this development. As part of this proposal, the applicant is proposing to contribute $580,000 to future traffic improvements in the area, and this will be secured through the LDA. Traffic impact assessment was completed for the development and updated for the revised proposal. As part of the traffic impact assessment, it was recommended that some potential short-term improvements in the area could include signalization of the new Dawood Drive-Highway 99 intersection, roundabout where the current Garibaldi Way and Tantalus Road intersection is, and potentially an additional right-out access from the mall to Highway 99 to alleviate traffic congestion along Garibaldi Way. Longer term, it's recognized that potentially a fully signalized intersection at Dawood Drive would be required, and potentially a grade-separated access from east to west, and that will be looked at in more detail when a broader traffic impact assessment is done for the area. The graph on the right shows in red the additional vehicle trips generated from the Garibaldi Springs development during peak hours, and then the middle bar, the darker bar, is showing additional vehicle trips that will be generated from additional development in the area, which includes lands to the east and to the north of Garibaldi Springs. So it illustrates that the impact of additional vehicle trips from the Garibaldi Springs development is relatively small compared to the development that is proposed or could occur in the area. The new development, as it reduces the unit count slightly, will of course reduce the number of vehicle trips in the area slightly, but the number of vehicle trips during peak hours hasn't really changed. Two to three vehicles per minute at Tantalus and Dawood Drive, and approximately three to four vehicles per minute at Tantalus and Newport Ridge Drive. And the recent traffic impact assessment did do some assessment of AM peak traffic hours, or AM peak traffic, in response to some concerns that have been raised previously. They found that there was no significant increase in vehicle trips generated from the proposed development.
Just moving on to the actual bylaws themselves, the proposed OCP amendment that we are looking at proposes that the four blue parcels be designated as residential neighborhood, and with Parcel A at the top, there is already, I lost my pointer, the very northern part of Parcel A is already designated residential neighborhood, so only a part of Parcel A needs to be re-designated. The remainder of the site, approximately 78%, would remain designated greenway corridors and recreation. The proposed zoning amendment is a bit more complex. In blue, the four blue parcels are proposed to be zoned a new RM4 zone, which is a mixed-use, multifamily zone to provide for the mix of duplexes, townhouses, and cottages that have been proposed. The P4 zone is also a new zone. Currently, the district zoning bylaw doesn't have a zone for conservation or environmental protection, so the new P4 zone is titled Ecological Reserve Zone, and that will apply to all of the green areas. The P3 zone, which are the little smaller orange areas, and there's three that are actually quite hard to see along the boundaries here, which are the active park areas that will, active play areas that are proposed on the less environmentally sensitive areas of the ecological reserve. And the remaining active park areas are within the strata parcels, and the clubhouse site retains its CD12 zoning. On the very left-hand side, there are four parcels, which don't show up very well. Tantalus Road runs along here. These were parcels that were dedicated to the district as part of the original golf course development, but they had an unusual zoning that allowed for some odd things like extensive parking. They are meant to be protected habitat, so we are placing those four district lands in the P4 zone at the same time to reflect their intended purpose for habitat protection. In terms of policy, we have reviewed this project against the OCP policies, and the planning department believes that it is consistent with the OCP natural areas policies, which require, as it provides protection and restoration of natural areas with significant habitat values. And further, it protects sensitive ecosystems, including species and ecosystems at risk. It minimizes habitat loss and fragmentation, particularly with the newer layout, and it rehabilitates and enhances previously degraded areas. The proposal also provides for public ownership of environmentally sensitive areas. The proposal is also considered to be consistent with OCP's smart growth principles, as it is within the growth management boundary and provides compact infill development, and it also provides a range of housing options, including affordable housing. I won't read this, but I have mentioned throughout the presentation that a land development agreement will be structured. If the council decides to move the bylaws forward, the land development agreement in its full form will be brought to council prior to adoption, so council will have a chance to read the full document. But the key items to be included in the land development agreement are to secure the amenity contributions, to secure the proposed environmental protection, and will include a clause that the district will execute a Section 219 covenant with a nonprofit land conservancy, and this was a request of council earlier, to provide some longevity beyond the zoning for the environmental protection. The maintenance costs and the formula for how those will be paid will be secured in the LDA. The affordable housing, the restrictions I've outlined for Parcel A. The public land dedications and right-of-way dedications and infrastructure requirements will also be secured in the land development agreement. We have had a few referral agency comments back since the bylaws were referred. BC Hydro has no concerns. They did note they've got an existing right-of-way corridor that needs to be respected. BC Transit also indicated no objection to the proposed development, as it is in keeping with nearby densities and usage. They did note that some portions of the site may be difficult to serve efficiently, and recommended trail links to Tantalus Road, and after talking with BC Transit about their referral, they didn't realize we have trail links to Tantalus Road. They haven't submitted an update, but they did still mention that parts of the development are just probably longer distance than they would like on the eastern edge for walking to Tantalus Road. The Ministry of Transportation just provided us their comments a couple of days ago. They have no objection to the proposed bylaws. They recommend the district arrange for further road network planning, as Dave Marrow described, to increase connectivity north-south and east-west, and consider overall traffic impacts in this broader developing area. They also mentioned that Highway 99 is a controlled-access highway intended to accommodate high-volume traffic flow, and they may limit additional signalized intersections, so further review of the proposed signalization at Dawood Drive is required. So the public input, there was a public information meeting held on June 25th. Twenty-six residents provided responses following that up to August 29th. The key issues raised, and this is really just a brief overview, there was a lot of concern with the reapplication process being too soon after the previous application was denied, ongoing concerns with habitat impacts, habitat loss, impacts on neighboring properties. A number of comments were received that this is premature development and that other areas should be infilled first. A lot of overall growth concerns regarding traffic, schools, large rate of development, future daycare needs. I should have mentioned, one of the community amenities proposed by the developer is a daycare in the lower floor of the clubhouse building. I kind of glossed over that. Support for the project has also been received from individuals and community organizations, including the Squamish Trail Society and the Squamish River Watershed Society. So the recommendations, I believe, are in front of you in your council package, subject to council's consideration after the public hearing, that the bylaws be given third reading, and that prior to adoption of the bylaws, the land development agreement be executed and registered. That's the end of mine.
Thank you very much. I'll go to council first to see if there's any questions for clarification purposes based on the presentation. I have one question, maybe two. Can you go to the slide that has the habitat- Can you go to the slide that has the habitat riparian, non-riparian habitat compensation? There was one contiguous non-riparian habitat, that one here. Two thousand five hundred eighty-five cubic meters, oh, not cubic. Where exactly is that piece on the property?
Contiguous non-riparian habitat. I have to, I didn't know at one point what that was. Do you know what that is, Dave? I'm trying to remember if that is the contiguous non-riparian habitat.
Is that the aesthetic pond?
No. I knew that, the answer to that at one point. I'll just have to look it up.
I can just chime in here briefly here as I look through it. It is located in Lot D, so it could be that pond, if you give me one minute.
Okay, I just couldn't place it in my mind, so that, if you do find a specific answer...
I believe it actually is Pond Six, the one that is not considered to be...
Aquatic habitat.
Aquatic or riparian habitat.
Okay. Councilor Chappell.
Thank you. I'm interested in the strata maintenance of our water sewer roads. How are we going to ensure that the strata is encouraged to save enough resources in order to renew the infrastructure when the time is due? And as well, paying for park infrastructure? They're not required to pay for the adjacent and the park infrastructure that they're directly inside and surrounding, or the trails inside, but they're required to pay for sewer water and roads? Is that correct?
I'm not sure who wants to answer that, but these are consistent for all developments. So just how do we approach strata roads, infrastructure parks, in the long term with developments?
Yes, through the mayor. As the mayor notes, strata developments are set up with the strata council to oversee this and ensure that the infrastructure that belongs to the strata is maintained appropriately, which will in the long term save the strata money, so that they don't have repairs if the infrastructure is not well-maintained. In this proposal, the applicant has suggested that each of the phases of development will be its own strata, and there will be an overarching strata with members of each of the strata councils of the individual parcels or individual lots. And that, in their experience, has provided a higher level of scrutiny of this type of maintenance of utilities, and will be harder for, example, one parcel or somebody to pull out of the agreement and not, you know, elect not to provide funds for the maintenance. So it's sort of a higher level of security that those funds will be available.
Thank you.
Do we have other developments in the district that have this same arrangement, like that a strata owns the road, sewer, water?
Yeah, we do. Another good example would be the Eaglewind Community, which is a community of townhouses and condominiums, and all the roads inside are strata roads, and all the pipes inside are strata pipes.
Councilor Chappell.
Yep.
Any other questions for clarification purposes from council?
I'll ask one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
The affordable housing, eighteen units is 5 percent. Has that gone down? And also, I'm interested in why the affordable housing has been put up where it has less access to transit and walkability at the top of the units instead of down at DNC.
Through the mayor, the 5.8 percent is actually an increase from the previous proposal, which was 5 percent, although the number of units is 18. But I would mention that the affordable housing amount is coming in two forms. They're constructing units, and they are dedicating $3 million in cash, which can be used for affordable housing at council's discretion. So in effect, it is more than 5 percent. It's just that it's a combination of units and money. The units are placed at the north end of the site, at the direction of the planning department, who wanted to see the units sooner rather than later. And it wasn't really a question of placing them further from transit. The Dawid Drive, you walk down Dawid Drive to Tantalus, for none of the units front on Tantalus, which would be a deal, but that's where all the important habitat is. So in all of the phases, people do have to walk either along Dawid or Newport Ridge Drive to Tantalus to catch a bus. But the idea with having them in units in Parcels A and B was to get them sooner, to get the units as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give council one more chance to ask a question for clarification purposes. Don't see any. I do have a list of 20 so far on the speaker's list. I will state a name and then also state someone who's on deck. You have five minutes. If you don't complete your thought in that five minutes, we'll come back to you later on in the process. We want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to get, go through the list in a timely manner. First up is Jack Cooley, and on deck is Adam Smith. And please, when you approach the podium, state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business, or an organization.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Squamish Streamkeeper Society. Mayor, councilors, once again, I am petitioning you that you accept Polygon's Garibaldi Springs' latest proposal. Of course, my being a streamkeeper means that my Dr. Zeus, Loraxian focus, is on enough riparian area to provide healthy streams and healthy aquatic life. Now, if you study, well, the diagrams I'm referring to now were up on there, but that's the second one. The one before, like she had them side by side before.
Let me find it for you.
Keep going, Jack.
I'm waiting for the slides to come up. Yes, that's it. So if you study those diagrams, you can see that the Garibaldi Springs forested area has been increased from 56 percent to 72 percent of the total development, with certainly enough riparian area to meet the district's riparian rules. Now, besides the increased riparian area, there's another reason to support this project. Presently, three streams, Mian, the lower one, Thunderbird, the middle one, and No Name, flow through this property. Two of them, Mian and Thunderbird, consistently spawn salmon. But a fourth creek, Newport Creek, which used to spawn Coho, doesn't do so now, due to huge boulders that have fallen onto the stream bed. Well, Polygon has promised to fix this problem and do other things that will resurrect Newport Creek. So I encourage you to support this project. That's it.
Thank you very much. Adam Smith, and on deck, Edith Tob. Please state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business or an organization. Thanks.
Adam Smith, 1974 Dawid Drive, representing myself. Just dropped an Excel sheet outlining the data on the district's own development showcase. Shows over 7,500 housing units in the pipeline right now. If we use 2.2 residents per unit, as they did in the oceanfront, that leaves a capacity for over 16,500 residents to move to this town in that build-out timeframe, which is mostly in the next decade, with the exception of the oceanfront pushing into the 15-year-plus mark. That doesn't account for Garibaldi Springs. That doesn't account for Chima Lands. 16,500 new residents. There are no need for more units here until we take a pause, especially on this site. Do we actually buy the notion that we heard earlier that there's no new vehicle trips? No new vehicle trips? Okay. This should be the last piece of private land to be OCP amended, after we've built out everything else that follows our own district guidelines. What we should be doing right now is taking a breath to responsibly manage what we've already got in the pipeline, and to be sure that Squamish retains its identity, why people are moving here. We need to manage that. We don't owe a landowner anything, any landowner, really. Senior centers, other non-related projects should not influence our decisions here. This should stand alone, if it's the right move for the residents of Squamish, the current residents of Squamish. So as we go to this vote, just want to touch on the fact that you, this group, is the stewards. You are the stewards of the current community and OCP. Please act on behalf of the best interests of the current residents of Squamish. The stakeholders and groups who stand to profit are here tonight. They've emailed you. They got the nice letters asking them to please speak up for the project. People who have a busy first week of school might not all be here, but 1,800 people signed a petition with accurate information, nothing about a four-lane, tannalous road, just that we shouldn't be developing this piece of property that's green space corridor. 1,800 people signed that petition. 600 since the last time we stood here and did this. People who turned up for all stages of the OCP process we just had, had their say when this land remained unchanged in its designation. Why do we even have an OCP if we're just going to bend it around the wishes of the next developer that acts and presents a very nice project? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask you not to clap or cheer, please. This is, the aim is to be a non-intimidating room, so everyone's opinion is heard, so please do not clap or cheer. I have Edith Tob, and then on deck is Chessie Knight.
Edith Tob, 41820 Rayburn Road, Brackendale, Executive Director of the Squamish River Watershed Society. I'm here to provide a clarification before I go into my comments. We brought this up at the previous public hearing. We brought this up with council. The Squamish River Watershed Society neither adorses nor opposes development. The statement in the presentation that the Watershed Society is supporting this, we take exception to, would like that corrected. We're here to provide comments on our views of the development by Polygon and the benefits that we see for Megan Creek watershed and for the fisheries values and habitat. Should the development be approved, the Squamish River Watershed Society recognizes that the green spaces in the revised plans include ecological reserves, parkland, and continued protection of riparian zones and watercourses that will improve the overall function of Megan Creek, ultimately Dryden Creek, by allowing improved water infiltration, water quality, and overall wildlife habitat, in particular for salmonids. I want to add to that, the previous development for the Garibaldi Springs Golf Course has dramatically impacted the habitat for salmonids. The Watershed Society and other organizations have been monitoring the watercourses. Finding the Coho presence, juvenile salmonids over the years, has been dramatically in decline since the construction of Garibaldi Springs Golf Course. We see an opportunity under the new proposal by Polygon, if it is approved, that could predominantly benefit the salmonids by improving the water temperatures and the overall groundwater infiltration. The ecological reserves will allow once again for wetland habitat, which originally existed over much of the site prior to the massive infilling that occurred to create the golf course. Truckload after truckload after truckload after truckload of sand. I don't have an estimate of the total volume of fill material that was brought in to make the golf course what it is today, but it's substantial, it's compacting, and under the new proposal for the ecological reserves, it will involve removing a lot of that overburden and allowing the area to function again as a wetland, like a massive sponge. The overall flood storage will reduce the impacts for standing water that exists now. So I know there's concerns from neighboring properties about flooding. By removing and providing proper infiltration, that should reduce that, as a natural wetland will occur. I also want to make a comment and address some of the previous statements, just in terms of the conception or the view, that should anybody be providing comment that's not in opposition to Polygon, that they must somehow be paid or under the auspices of Polygon. I take exception to that. I'm here under my own will from the Watershed Society. We gain no profit from any of this discussion. We're here to really state the benefits that we see for the environment, so I just want to make that clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chessie Knight, and on deck, Andreas Albert. Please state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business or an organization.
I'm Chessie Knight. I'm the president of the Squamish River Watershed Society. I live at 40741 Highlands Way North. I'm just going to add a little bit to what Edith just said. I'm going to read from a letter from Fisheries and Oceans Canada that was written August 26, 2010. And this letter speaks to the, the issue that I want to speak to by using this letter is the concerns about the habitat losses that may be incurred if this proposal goes ahead. And it's interesting to me, this is a very tough one for mayor and council and for the community, but it's interesting to me, all of these environmental concerns that are being used to say why this proposal shouldn't go ahead, where were you guys 15 years ago when we were trying to stop the golf course, when the damage was really done? But anyway, that's just my personal opinion. So this is a letter from Fisheries and Oceans Canada, speaking to the shortcomings of the compensation works that are on the golf course presently, that were done in order to compensate for the habitat losses from construction of the golf course. And this letter was written by myself. The highlights of this letter were to discuss the DFO's significant concerns about the negative effects on the fisheries resource caused by the construction of the golf course. And the main impetus for our concern was over the poor-functioning compensatory habitat, namely the ponds. And Edith talked about this a little bit when she spoke about all the overburden in the soil that was compacted over the wetlands where the fairways are. And the reason the ponds are so big is because the site was so wet, they had to, those ponds were the source of the fill that's on the fairways. So there was about 10 years of Coho smolt migration, outmigration, monitoring data. Various entities, the Watershed Society, various consultants, and DFO, had run a fish-counting fence at Lower Megan Creek, right at Government Road, where Megan Creek goes under Government Road. Just above that spot, we ran a fence for about six weeks a year, and we had over 10 years of data before the golf course went in. And the average number of smolts, so these are juvenile Coho that are ready to go to sea, was between 6,000 to 8,000. Those are the kinds of numbers we'd like to see again. After the golf course, starting in about 2009, so four years after the construction of the golf course was completed, figure that's about one Coho lifecycle, the returning number, or the leaving numbers of smolts were 350 in 2009 and 530 in 2010. So that tells you right there that all this compensation that we're worried about altering as a result of this development was not functioning. I don't think I need to beat that point up anymore. I think everybody gets it. So as Edith said, the Watershed Society's position, should this proposal be approved by council, mayor and council, is that we look forward to working with Polygon. We think there is a huge opportunity to restore a lot of the lost ecological functions. And if this proposal goes away, and everybody's depending on federal agencies and provincial agencies to protect this site, we don't live in that world right now, and I don't know when that world is coming back, so it's on us. If this proposal goes away, and five years later we get another proposal, it's probably going to have more densification, less ecological reserve, less effort to restore... going to have more densification, less ecological reserve, less effort to restore functioning aquatic and wetland habitat. Maybe not, but I guess that's a risk that we're willing to take, is to work with this developer right now. So the only two concerns that I still feel haven't been adequately addressed, and I understand that these will probably be addressed in the environmental DP stage, I just want to say it again, it's something I have said many times before, is stormwater. Stormwater management is key for this site. It is the receiving environment of all the stormwater from the Garibaldi Highlands, and if we want to keep the ecological values that exist presently and hopefully are going to increase, stormwater management is key. The other thing that I'd really like to see taken off the table is the right-of-way for the Newport Ridge extension into Garibaldi Highlands. That has nothing to do with Polygon, that has nothing to do with this development. I just want to put that out there for now, to take it out of the OCP, take that right-of-way out of the OCP and the transportation plan. I don't, I'm not saying council has to do that as part of this project, but it's just a concern that I have with this site as we continue to develop either this site and/or the lands above this site. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andreas, please, please no clapping. Andreas Albert, and on deck is Jerry, I can't read the writing, I'm sorry.
Goodwin.
Goodwin. Now it looks like Goodwin. Thanks.
Andreas Albert, 41120 Rockridge Place. I'm speaking for myself here today. I sent you a presentation, and I would love to give you a chance to also look at some of the pictures as we go through some of the pictures in this presentation. I will break this up, so I will stop after five minutes to give others a chance. There are key benefits, and you heard already some of the key benefits, especially around the ecological reserve. I can't disagree with that. They're definitely of value on that side. Nevertheless, we lose a significant amount of green space, 22%. The other piece, what we're losing in this particular case, is the opportunity for recreational opportunities. It's zoned as green space, it's zoned for recreation, and it has land value associated with that. By turning it into housing, we lose that opportunity for future cases, and that's one thing what I have not heard in this entire process overall. Another big pro overall is the restoration in the ecological reserve, but it also is counted by extensive loss of habitat and too small setbacks for endangered species, and we'll talk more about that later. Replanting and the emergency access road will also substantially affect the neighborhood, and I will go through that in the later pictures. The 310 multifamily houses, as what our friend Adam commented on, there are too many unfinished development proposals with risk of market collapse. We're going to sit on empty units, and that's not good for any of us overall. Many of us see that, you know, this is seen as building on fairways, and what I see is still in much of the proposal, especially Phase One, Phase Two, we lose habitat, we lose trees, we lose green space within that. I will look at those pictures in detail. In addition, retaining walls is still a concern, and actually exposing retaining walls, especially as we look at the emergency access road. Comments were made about the CAC proposal of 11.9 million. That's definitely a benefit, but on the other hand, the rezoning creates a value, when we look at the 310 units, of over 80 million in value. And so the question is, is that the fair balance for our taxpayers? Plus, the taxpayers are actually on the hook for the maintenance. There's certainly support for direct beneficiaries, there's support obviously for certain parts on the ecological reserve, but as Adam commented also, we have over 1,800 signatures against it. Some of the development practices, what I'm particularly concerned about, what we'll look at in detail, are related to clearcutting, cutting into riparian areas, ugly retaining walls, inadequate parking, barbed wire fencing in the neighborhood, as you see in the pump station, and then focus on maximizing profit, not developing great neighborhoods, and I'm looking for great neighborhoods. As you all see, and this is the slide number four, we all know what Sky Ridge looks like as we drive down the highway. I would like not to see more of that. If I look at slide five, the key issues with Phase One, the proposal doesn't fit on the fairway, and that's one thing. When you look currently at the development area, what you're missing, there was actually a lot of listening from the department here from Polygon, and I really do appreciate that. And from my perspective, it is an improvement from where we came, that the houses were moved a bit further back from the edge of the fairway facing Rockridge Place. The concern I have is with the multifamily housing, that the space required to put two rows of multifamily housing, there's not enough space to leave the green strip of trees in the center, which would actually lead to a nice breakup. Instead, when we look at the overall area, what we'll end up with is clearcutting most of the area, the center part will be gone, as commented, you know, some of the trees on the front edge will be trimmed. How many will be gone, I don't know. That's why I originally asked for a covenant to actually protect some of the trees in those areas. So what I would like to see on that side is really, can we actually come up with a proposal which fits on the fairway? It may mean, you know, some single-family housing in the front row. I'm not an architect, but in Adam's points here, we have 6,600 multifamily houses on the table, 800 single-family houses. If we change a few, I don't think it makes a difference, but it makes a difference to the appearance of the neighborhood. Inadequate parking is another concern. Parking on Tantalus, most people will not walk there, so you're going to have a parking nightmare in some of these developments. If I look at slide six, that zooms in, it shows really the two areas in terms of where I'm concerned about, that we're losing the trees in those areas and the appearance of the overall neighborhood. And we'll look at that in more detail, especially with Phase Two. The positive changes, as I commented, buildings being moved back, a barer vegetation, great things, good addition, I do appreciate that. For me, it's just, will there be a tree left when we look at the development? The planning department, you know, was good from a listening perspective, but I'm also worried about retaining walls in the center, because in reality, we're looking at a 10-meter difference in the center section roughly. Tiny front yards and backyards as it looks right now, so from a livability perspective, it's not necessarily great either. So if I then, just actually stop now, because I'm just, use up my five minutes, I will be happily to come back and talk about Phase Two, which actually further focuses on the challenges of clearcutting in this area and the overall appearance. Thank you.
You had 12 seconds left, by the way, Andreas. Jerry Goodwin, and on deck is Donald Byrne.
I'm Jerry Goodwin from 41140 Rockridge Place, representing myself. Many of us are concerned about the impact Polygon's going to have on our local roads as problems are already becoming evident. For example, the speed limit on Doward Drive, below the hairpin bend is 30 kilometers, and this is not being adhered to by a lot of people. On one occasion, I was leaving Rockridge in my car, ensured there was nothing coming down Doward Drive, made my turn, and there was a screeching noise and the front of a white car overshot the back of my car, missing a collision by centimeters. My son also had the same experience, except his car was a write-off. The next junction is the stop sign at Doward Drive and Tantalus Road, where the drivers are proceeding forward to take the highway exit or left onto Tantalus. It's a dangerous junction, because there's a hairpin bend on the right, and there's no stop signs for the Tantalus Road traffic. Also, some of those huge trucks going up to Sky Ridge Development don't come to halt at the stop signs, this has been witnessed on numerous occasions. The Doward Drive exit onto the highway does not cater for traffic wishing to travel south, so there's no Tantalus Road traffic relief there. People living on Tantalus have expressed frustration about trying to turn left during rush hour traffic. How are they supposed to cope when we have the high-density traffic from Polygon? Those exiting from the Alpinos parking lot also have the hazard of a hairpin bend to the right. According to Drive Smart BC, motor vehicles aren't supposed to park on cycle lanes. However, this last summer, this happened constantly by the executive suites, on other occasions where an especially large group of people gathered, there was extensive parking on the bicycle lane all the way up Tantalus Road. Bicycle lanes are there to keep people safe. They're frequently used by local parents taking their small children out on bikes, and they should, these people should not be put at risk. There's also legal parking along Tantalus Road at various spots, and it's much needed, it's used a lot by local residents. However, some of it's on hairpin bends. How are those drivers supposed to be able to safely leave their parking spaces if we have high-density traffic? The junction of Garibaldi Way and Tantalus Road must be the most dangerous junction in the whole of Squamish. At the first small stretch of Garibaldi Way, you have cars entering and leaving the highway, entering and leaving the independent parking lot and two service stations. There's a bus stop across the road from the exit of Tantalus Road, a pedestrian crossing to the left, and then in the other bit of Tantalus Road further up. This frequently means that people trying to turn left out of Tantalus Road are delayed, causing frustration. I've spoken with many people who say they often turn left at the funeral home instead of attempting to make the left on Garibaldi Way. This increased traffic must be so frustrating for residents. I understand from your engineering department that there are going to be upgrades on Tantalus Road, Garibaldi Way junction at some point in the future, but seriously, this is like planning in the dark. In November 2011, one of our current counselors didn't support the original development proposal when the Garibaldi Springs Golf Course was owned by Doug Day. He said this was due to traffic issues, and that was for 220 homes. This original proposal had a second exit onto the highway and a road access to the Highlands. Now the pressure on our roads has increased, and the population count of Sky Ridge will add to this dilemma. How can the district be considering adding an extra 300-plus homes to the mix? All the residents from Sites A and B will be using Sky Ridge Development and Doward Drive and its hairpin bend for access. With both the Sky Ridge and Polygon developments, we're talking about over 800 more cars in the area. All the hotspots I've mentioned and density of traffic are problematic now, and the situation will deteriorate when the Sky Ridge Development is completed and when the new school opens there, that is a fact. Approving Polygon's development will seriously exacerbate the problems even further. It's too late to stop the Sky Ridge Development, but it's not too late to stop Polygon's proposal. Please don't shut your eyes to this. The district needs to remember that it has a responsibility to keep our roads and intersections safe and shouldn't be making them more dangerous. Agreeing to Polygon's proposal is the same as agreeing to more accidents, injuries, and fatalities. It's like saying that that is acceptable, and it just isn't.
Thank you. Please don't clap, please, thank you. Donald Byrne, and on deck is Gwen Young. Please state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself a business or an organization.
Yes, my name is Donald Byrne, and I live at 1024 Regency Place, Garibaldi Highlands, and I guess that's what you need. Anyhow, Mayor Heinzman and councilors and people here, good evening. We built our house on the corner of Newport Ridge Drive and Regency Place in 1998, and have enjoyed our living there for the last 20 years. The golf course has been in use a good part of the time, but the maintenance, little or little, distracts, just using the entrance close to our house. However, the staff and golfers all use the entrance to the hotel on Tantalus Road. We have been against the closing of the golf course and all the building to be planted on it now, and have been at the most of the public hearings over the last few years. There are a total of 34 full-size houses on the three roads built off Newport Ridge Drive, going west to Tantalus Way Road where we live. Polygon now plan in 25 to 227 to build 145 of wide variety small homes on lots C and D, starting at the southern end of our lots, off Regency Place and Newport Ridge Drive. The comparison of your lots, C and D, houses to be built of 145 small homes, really exceeds our 39 homes off Newport Ridge, and then through ours are bigger. We have mostly retired people. Our roads are quite busy, and we are not for any extra buildings or other movements. On other previous occasions, they were elsewhere, and it was only there that, the last vote was reduced to three and four against the project. I remember your mayor, Patricia Heinzman, voted against it, and it was mostly her that strongly favored more housing, et cetera, on lots C and D with exit onto Newport Ridge Drive. I feel very strongly that extra tariffs on our Newport Ridge Road, traffic rather, is not the way to go, since other ways were viable except for her and. We think that there are many other places closer to schools and shopping downtown that are more suitable than the golf course. I feel very strongly on this, and will consider taking Mayor Heinzman and others that might support it to legal advice and copy it necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwen Young, and on deck is Stephen Chan? Got that right?
Gwen Young, 41205 Rockridge Place. I would like to address process tonight. I attended the last public hearing and may have spoke in opposition of this development. I was in council chambers on May 8th when the third reading was opposed by a majority. Many of us cautiously celebrated. The group consensus recognized that the moment was fleeting. We knew that the developer would return due to the enormous amount of money and profit involved, but we understood that we would have a minimum six-month reprieve. Being that I only have five minutes, I've had to seriously scale back my presentation that was originally 12 minutes and focus quickly on the key points. I, like many, were stunned to see the Garibaldi Springs proposal quietly put back on the agenda a mere 30 days after it was voted down. One could only assume that over the course of 30 days, many people were quietly hard at work behind the scenes, exploring loopholes and cutting corners to accommodate a positive and timely outcome for the developer. Procedure and governance were abandoned with respect to timing, and due to the diligent efforts of our community who spoke up, the first and second reading were tabled to await the required 21 days for public comment. The mayor at that time made it clear that despite the setback in timing, that they intended to move forward as quickly as possible. The DOS noted on their website that the application was a resubmission. The onsite signage also states that it is an application resubmission. Do I need to highlight the fact that the words used are resubmission versus new application? It's important to differentiate. The twisting of words and interpretations of procedural bylaws to serve a specific end result does not communicate trust, transparency, or engagement. The inconsistencies within the verbiage is evident. The community reacted in unison, challenging officials on the fact that the proposal was a reapplication requiring a six-month reprieve versus a new application, and several layers of correspondence were exchanged with many contradictions. Ultimately, it is a play on words, a disagreement on interpretation, powers that be justifying their actions, but then, but when does good business practice, ethics, and morals factor into the equation? Transparency, or as I tell my children, doing the right thing by others? I applauded Councilor Jason Blackman-Wolfe, who when the proposal had boomerang effects, stated at the council meeting of June 12th the following, "I do not support the previous iterations of this project. More so than that, I have concerns about process. Concerned that this is a misuse, bringing back the project for a do-over. I'm not comfortable with that. I think if we do go through a very significant, long process with the community, I think the community needs to be confident that the result will be respected. In this case, I think that the vote was clear, and I do think that I don't see that there has been much change, and I'm concerned about the ability of the people to be tired out on process. Individuals take time out of the day to volunteer their time, and they may get tired out, whereas an applicant with money on the line will show up. I'm very, very concerned about the message it sends, while maybe technically kosher, it doesn't send a good message. What we should be saying is a message to applicants... What we should be saying is a message to applicants to bring their first foot forward, the first time around, not second or third time, to get away with something that is not very acceptable to the community. I can't in good conscience support this." I praise councillor Susan Chappell, who stated that public process was not being adhered to. She completely concurred with the previously stated sentiments and further claimed that it was definitely not in the public's best interest to be worn down like this by projects coming back over and over again outside of the six months. And I deeply value councillor Peter Kent's feedback, in which he stated he continued to oppose the development for a variety of concerns previously stated, such as infill, traffic, riparian, and not least, process. The public has concerns with process. Three councillors have voiced opposition to the manner in which this development proposal has been managed. It is evident to me that this entire process is incredibly strategic. Many anticipate that the thrust behind this race to greenlight the project is to take advantage of the timing. Undertaking this process during the summer months, when many people are away, is optimal for the developer. The timing makes it near impossible for citizens to dedicate time to formulate a strong defence. And the public is exhausted. Months and endless hours were invested by many to protest and preserve the community the first time around. It's unfair to place the burden of rallying another Hercules effort to once again protest only weeks after we put our pens down. And let's talk about the timing of this meeting here tonight. Scheduling on the first week a return to routine? I know some of you have young kids in school, which means you understand and can relate to how truly taxing and demanding this week is on families. To schedule a public hearing this week on such a sensitive community issue lacks any forethought and does not convey respect. Do you really want this to be your legacy? By all the aforementioned accounts, citizens can only speculate that those elected officials in favour of this proposal are attempting to ensure the project moves forward prior to the election of a new mayor and council in October. I would question why? Why not wait? The mayor and several councillors are not returning. I would propose that the mayor and those councillors not returning should not vote on this matter, as they will not be able to shepherd this project through completion. And knowing that many members of the community are opposed, why not allow a new panel to evaluate the proposal? I'm almost done.
Yeah, no worries.
After all, with all due respect, here are some comments that I found disturbing at round two of the first and second reading by those councillors who voted in favour of the first proposal. Councillor Karen Elliott stated, "I think this new proposal is an improvement over the old one." Councillor Doug Ray stated, "This, in many ways, respects is even better than that one." Councillor Ted Prior commented when referring to the second proposal, "I could not in any way say that that wasn't way better, way better." Think about that for a moment. Really contemplate those statements. Our elected officials, who voted in favour of the first original proposal claiming that the community was deriving great benefit and it was in our best interests, were now stating just weeks later that the second proposal was even better, an improvement, or way better in their own words. How does that instill public confidence?
I'll ask you to wrap up, Gwen. You can come back and speak later after the list is done.
Okay, I've just got like another minute.
Okay.
Like councillor Jason Blackwolfe clearly stated, "The developer should bring his best foot forward the first time around, period." Why wasn't more demanded the first time around on behalf of Squamish residents? I am curious what a new panel might negotiate and what could be attained in the future if, in fact, the land is developed. In closing, I would like to say that there is very limited resources available to the public when they feel they have been wronged or misrepresented. We don't have deep pockets like the large, independent profitable companies. However, there is one avenue available that does not involve a financial outlay, and that is the BC Obis person in Victoria. The Group of Concerned Citizens forming Keep Garibaldi Green, consisting of 1,800 supporters to date, filed an official written complaint with the BC Obis person on June 19th. The BC Obis person is an independent statutory office of the provincial legislator that investigates companies whereby individuals feel they have been treated unfairly by, in this case, local government. The organisation states that an investigation can lead to systematic improvements that may be of benefit. We have received confirmation that our complaint has been received and registered. However, due to the current enormous caseload, it will take time for an investigative team to be available to review and investigate our grievances, which include process, conflict of interest, and disregard for written documentation.
Gwen, I'll ask you to wrap up.
Therefore, for all the aforementioned reasons to delay voting on this coupled with this filing, I urge you to wait to make a decision. Allow a new mayor and council to evaluate the Garibaldi Springs proposal, while at the same time permitting a full review and investigation into the public's concerns to be evaluated, assessed, and reported independently by a third party. Thanks for your patience.
Stephen Chan, I believe the pronunciation is, but please forgive me if I didn't get that right. And Brian Hughes is on deck.
My name is Stephen Chan. Thank you, it was pretty close, closer than most people get. I live on 41050 Tantalus Road and Greenside Estates. I was here in May, spoke at the last public hearing, and basically just reiterating what everyone is saying in opposition of this development. I was there when council voted for, four against, and three for the development, and I actually couldn't believe it, that that actually happened. I feel like, as Gwen stated, it was a very, it was a bit of a timid celebration, as we knew there was something coming down the pipeline again. We've heard all the reasons, the traffic, the fact that Skyrage hasn't even been built yet. I personally live, you know, and commute down Tantalus Road daily. Adding another right-hand turn onto the highway northbound does not alleviate anything. There's no southbound turning lane onto the highway except for Garibaldi Way, and that intersection, as clearly stated before, is a complete nightmare, especially not even taking into consideration the amount of traffic that we get in Squamish on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays and long weekends. The parking is also an issue. The parking right now, I'm forced to park on Tantalus Road outside of my complex because I have a one-car garage and a carport. So the car fits in the carport. The one-car garage, as most Squamish residents houses bikes, skis, kayaks, kid stuff, storage, everything. So parking, it's usually hard to find parking on the street as it is, and that's only with Greenside Estates and the galleries building across the street. So we're talking, and I live right beside Doward Drive, and so we're talking, if we're talking about Tantalus Road being used as a parking area, completely false. As of right now, Polygon, which is developing across the street here, they've taken away most of their parking in front of people's garages, and people that live in this development across the street are forced to park in the parking lot of this recreation centre, because there is no parking on this street. So if that's something, a sign of things to come, then that's another reason to stop this and not believe everything that you read. The wildlife, that's a no-brainer. In the last two months in the summer, I've seen bear, like one bear, but he's there every other day. He's on the greens, he's in the forest, he's always there. We've seen a cougar. There's a pack of coyotes that live there. I hear them every night. There are beavers that inhabit those ponds. The ponds that were aesthetically built for the golf course 11 years ago are now inhabited by ducks, frogs, tadpoles, and beavers, and not in just one pond, but in several ponds. And the evidence is on the trees that are all eaten up. The one thing that I'm mostly upset about is what Gwen stated, is the due diligence and process that this new reading and this proposal has taken again. It's another example of a big corporate or a big developer from the city coming up to a small town, buying a plot of land that's not even zoned for residential, it's zoned for green space, and because they have the money, they have the people working behind it, they have people working full-time to basically sway councils' votes and their minds. Council has so many developments on the go right now. I know, I'm a builder, I'm working on the waterfront development, and there are lands that are set to be developed. The waterfront development behind the Shell Station was a wasteland, so that makes sense to develop. This place is a green space, it's designated as a green space. If we change this, this will just be, this will just be a precedent of things to come. We cannot allow this. It's the principle, is what it is, and it's in your power to keep it that way. We pushed back Chima, and I think that's the right decision. And as you said last time, Mayor, it's not the right time to develop this land, and it's still not the right time. It's four months later. It's not five years later, 10 years later. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Hughes and on deck is Matt Parker. Is Brian here?
He was, I saw him earlier.
I will skip over him if he's in the washroom or something. Matt Parker and on deck is Edward Archibald. Please state your name and address, and if you represent yourself a business or an organisation.
My name's Matt Parker. I'm representing the Squamish Trail Society. I live at 1114 Wilson Crescent, an area of town that's had considerable development. We had three houses go out and 50 to 60 townhouses go in, and I haven't noticed hardly any excess traffic. I've met some wonderful new neighbours, so people concerned about that. I hope that if this development goes forward, that it alleviates your fears. I'm speaking on behalf of the Squamish Trail Society. It is our assessment of this proposal that it's good for trail connectivity, trail funding, not to mention funding a variety of other important needs in our community. It's good also for the environment. With the vast majority of the Garibaldi Springs property moving from private hands to public and being preserved as green space, ecological reserve, and parkland, the plan before us will benefit more people and the environment than it possibly can as a derelict golf course or even as an actively-used golf course, which impairs connectivity to the Corridor Trail, from the Corridor Trail to the Coho Park Trail, Covenant Trail, and ultimately to Alice Lake Provincial Park. Speaking specifically to the benefits to our trail network, this plan would extend the Corridor Trail further along Tantalus Road to the pedestrian overpass at Highway 99, getting aforementioned children off Tantalus Road. It would allow connectivity between existing and future neighbourhoods, thus promoting alternate transportation and recreation and public health. And with improved trail connectivity to the Corridor Trail, hopefully it can alleviate some of the parking concerns we've had with people using various areas of Garibaldi Highlands as staging areas for mountain bike trips or trail running or hiking. It'll also provide a wheelchair and medical scooter accessible loop within a natural setting. It'll fund a connection from the Wonderland Trail to the Bracken Trail, which will allow cyclists and hikers and trail runners to get off a highway shoulder between Depot Road and the pedestrian overpass. Furthermore, the trail funding should help improve the safety and accessibility of the Bracken Trail, which connects to Jack's Trail, access to Alice Lake Provincial Park, allowing people that live in Brackendale and Garibaldi Estates to access those regions. Probably previous staff and councils at some point didn't see the importance of securing our dike lands, for example, as trail right-of-ways, and now we have an incomplete trail system along the Squamish River. From my understanding, in its present state, 56% of the current site is considered to be natural with habitat restoration and respect for the existing riparian areas. This development plan seeks to increase the naturalised forested area to 72%. This plan helps keep Garibaldi Springs green, and it provides improved trail connectivity in this area. It is our opinion that the benefits to the community and the environment warrant the approval to the OCP and zoning amendments needed to allow this plan to proceed. Thank you.
Thanks. Next up, Edward Archibald on deck, Anthony Lam. Please state your name and address, and if you represent yourself a business or an organisation.
Hi, Edward Archibald, 1008 Conder Place. I represent myself. Before I kind of touch into this a little bit, just for context, I am a developer. I have projects in the city in close proximity to Polygon. What I'm here to speak about is the community benefit side of it, and what I see as a member of the community is not anywhere close to enough for the element of removing area that is green space into housing. So the land price plus or minus is $15 million, the CAC is $11.9 million. The total value per door of what they're proposing is $87,000 a door. The appraised value for a townhouse site right now is around $137,000 a door. There's a lot of money being left on the table. If you take a generally acceptable process from Vancouver or other municipalities of 75% of the land lift, the land lift, if this is rezoned today, is $28 million. So 75% of that is $21 million, which means we're short about $10 million as a community that I know could go a long way to a lot of community infrastructure that we need currently. So at the end of the day, the cash that's been presented by Polygon is not near enough. In addition to that, there's a million dollars that, in my opinion, as a developer, having just completed a servicing agreement in the District of Squamish, there's about a million dollars of elements that are not a CAC. They're part of a servicing agreement, and they're part of an engineering requirement for the project to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Lam and on deck, Irina Erdos.
Hi. So yeah, I'm Anthony Lam. I'm 1038 Finch Drive, and I'm here representing Executive Suites Hotel. I'm the general manager there, so I'm representing the management company, Affleck Hotels. I just want to come here tonight just to let you know that the hotel is in full support of the development. I just wanted to take the time to make council aware of that. From our perspective, unfortunately, behind the hotel, there is an abandoned, failed golf course. We enjoy the view from the hotel patio, thanks to the present owners, Polygon, that do invest in doing some maintenance to keep it under control. Otherwise, I can only imagine what our guests would see every night looking out from the We accept the development is coming. We can see that a golf course has failed as a golf course, as a frisbee golf course, as a football kick golf course. It's not worked, it's done a lot of damage to the area, and somebody needs to come in and sort it, and we've been very impressed with the Polygon proposal. We've watched it develop, and we've watched it improve. 86% public access. We're very happy with the considerations to the views from the hotel. It's the main hotel here in Squamish, and a lot of visitors have their impression of Squamish from that hotel, and we're happy that under Polygon, then that they're still going to get that great outlook. Consideration to the trailways is great. Definitely trying to head north towards Alice Lake, and people using bikes is quite dangerous. A lot of people still having to cut down into the highway, and to do the loop into Jack's and the Wonderland Trail is going to be a great improvement. The money they're spending to work on the area directly behind the hotel, and where they're looking to replant some of the damage. I think that the term, you know, green area relates to the colour most of the year, but not really to the fact that they are. This is not a truly green area. It has been damaged. There's environmental people looking at it. It needs somebody to come in and balance the development with consideration to the area. And as I say, it's up 86% public access is well considered. So we're in full support of development, and we wish Polygon all the best.
Thank you. Irina Erdos and up on deck is Cathy Smiley.
Hi, I'm Irina Erdos. I'm 65 years old, and I lived in Dale's Place for 20 years. I have two questions. One, how far is the reach of council? Do we control Upper Squamish, Britannia? No, none of those places. Not even Upper Squamish. No. Okay, that was one of my questions. And another question was, why are we tearing down mountains only to use those rocks to fill in wetlands?
I'm not sure what you're speaking to specifically.
Well, I'm thinking that there's all kinds, like I see that Skyrage there, that they've been blasting the mountains, and all these rocks, and they're being used for fill throughout Squamish to build up the lands that is there for nature to clean the air and clean the water, et cetera. Why are we doing that?
You'll have to ask Skyrage that question.
Okay. I have been reluctant to speak publicly, but it is difficult to believe that all of the letters that we've sent in have been read. It seems that only numbers are tallied, the yes and no piles, and the goal is to wear us down, and it seems to be working. Look at how many people showed up tonight. Look at how many people showed up tonight. I thought the last public meeting was intended for local residents' input. I was very disappointed, and after a while, I had to leave. I was upset that there was time given over for people who did not live in our community. Twice, a Realtor who lives on Greenwood, backed by protective forest, said, "All development is good. Why not develop up there on the mountainside?" We also heard from cyclists who are probably not landowners around Geribaldi Springs. Did anyone hear or care about what the residents said? Our concerns seem to fall on deaf ears. Who exactly is council catering to, and why? Take the cycling and the river rafting to Upper Squamish. Take the development and traffic up there too, if you want to, or wherever else, but the south end of the Geribaldi Estates should be left alone. I thought we made that quite clear last time, that this was a very sensitive area, and now we're squishing in even more residents in there, which to me doesn't make any sense at all. I was further insulted when... It seems to me that there's... I feel insulted and disrespected for some... It seems to me like underhanded maneuvers. The comments in the chief undermined our wishes and what we were saying here as public taxpayers, and it basically gave an invitation to the developer to just try again. Voila, here we are, again. We fought so hard last time, I was just shaking, and I had a really hard time, I had to get out of here. I couldn't take anymore. It seems to me that some people are very desperately wanting to push this proposal through before their election. Now, I sent in a letter before, after all that happened. It said, "No means no. Stop raping our wetlands." Why is it so difficult for educated people to get this? Just stop raping our wetlands. We need them for Squamish, for B.C., for Canada, for the world. These are our most precious natural resources to maintain healthy ecosystems. It is our responsibility to protect, not to destroy. Do the right thing. Built on the hillsides and deadlands, preserve our vital wetlands. Surely, the last two summers can make everyone realize that clean air and water are the most important things in life. We are so lucky to have these here in Squamish. Why give these away for more development? pave bicycle trails that are lit and kept snow-free? We need our wetlands to maintain what we have. Let's take care of it. We have an opportunity here to show the world what is possible. If you get your priorities right, no song or dance or money should get us to sell out Squamish. We can slow down our growth and listen to nature, work with her, not against her. The long-term costs for our environment are too high. Please do the right thing. Stop further development at Geribaldi Springs. Admit that a mistake was made when the land was first sold to the golf course developer, because it meant dollars for the community. Those of us who have seen this before knew it wouldn't work, and it was simply a matter... It was simply a way for the developers to weasel in for more. Please stop this insanity. Do not continue along this path for the potential dollars and the promises of parklands. Use our tax dollars to solve the existing problems in the Geribaldi Highlands, not for spending money on these constant battles. Stop. Think. Slow down. With the right mindset, we can restore the wetlands at the south end of Geribaldi Estates or Geribaldi Springs, and to help nature heal and clean the air and the water. Just maybe, the songs of frogs, crickets, and birds will return, and we can keep the sounds of construction far away. I grew up in Kelowna in the 1960s, when it was a small community, and look at it now. I wouldn't want to live there anymore. I moved here 20 years ago for the clean air and the water, and lots of green space. The natural dirt on the trails under my feet brought me closer to nature. The protected lands behind me gave me hope that Squamish could learn from the mistakes of other communities. Please treasure what we have, and stop raping our wetlands. Stop the development, especially at the south end. Right now, I heard what was going on here, and I really don't see, like, we say we have zero accessibility to the land. Well, whose fault is that? It was ours. It was given to the golf course, basically. The traffic, this traffic is still going to come down Tantalus Way. There still is no south turns, like people were mentioning. So we still have a problem. I can't see how the roundabout at Geribaldi Way and Tantalus Way is going to solve a problem. I can't see why a Dowd Road is going to get a traffic light before we do down at the other end, Tantalus Way and Geribaldi.
Irina, I'll ask you to wrap up, and we can come back to you if you need more to say.
Okay, I think I pretty much said that. But all these conservation attempts that are being made over here, you know, if we just give this back to nature, she'll take care of it. We don't need these contractors. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Smiley, and on deck is Shane, I think it says Malloy or Molox.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name's Kathy Smiley. I currently rent a suite at 41205 Rockridge Place, and I submitted a letter today. I don't know if any of you had time to read it or not. I'm hoping that you don't mind if I just run through it here. I think it's maybe important for some of the public to be aware of this. I do want to state that I'm involved in a family that's a developer's, and I'm not opposed to development in any way, but as you know from the past couple of years of being involved in this, we are opposed to the OCP amendment, taking the golf course, the previous golf course, out of its current designation. Anyhow, I'm learning lots tonight, too. I appreciate everybody's comments, but basically what I want to say is that I had a busy summer, but we were reviewing the report of July 3 regarding the proposed Geribaldi Springs development, and we're now writing to advise of our very serious concerns in connection with one particular aspect, especially after I had met with Mr. Shoemaker, I guess about a year ago, and he had advised me that nothing would be done to the property directly behind our house at the time, which was 41205 Rockridge Place. Included in the proposal is an emergency access trail route. It's under Section 15 Site Access Changes, and it's to be built at the north end of the pond that meets up to Dowd Drive and Tantalus. The proposal will require both removal of a portion of the pond involving considerable infill and significant disruption to the area, including removal of greenery and foliage, all of which will negatively impact the space. As I will explain in this letter, we understand that this area cannot be disturbed, as it is a sensitive area and fish habitat. And as well, there has been lots of wildlife around there. We used to sit on our deck and watch the beavers swimming in the pond, and the bear, and the swans, and the ducks, et cetera. Coyotes out back. We were hoping we'd never see a cougar. Thankfully, we didn't. As some of you may be aware, W Dowd Limited and L&amp;A Contracting Limited were held accountable in 2011 by the DFO for doing work near Newport Creek. The work involved building a rock wall to house a sewer line to serve the homes along Rockridge Place, the lower homes that butt up to the golf course lands. It's important to note that this work had been approved under the subdivision process prior to our acquisition of the property from Geribaldi Springs. Our company had acquired the 11 Bear Land Strata subdivision, which had been created by the former owner of the golf course, which was Geribaldi Springs. Sid Brickman was the fellow in charge at the time. And in 2009, they were dealing with the failure of the golf course operation, and they wanted the lands to be gone. So we purchased it from them. And just to note that the purchase was not made until the subdivision had been completed and registered, so everything was in place. Despite having the rock wall construction pre-approved, we were told after its construction that because of the fish-bearing Newport Creek habitat, that the work should not have been authorized. And there's public information available to confirm what was done and the result. I have an article from the chief newspaper in November 1, 2012, which outlines some of the concerns that were raised at the time. In part, E. Toby was quoted as follows, saying that "The concern we had, along with the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, is that we wanted to somehow restore that water course to make it functional for salmon and cutthroat trout." As well, the article notes Toby said "The new water course will improve the conditions for local fish," but a lot of damage was done with the original rerouting. Also, there was an article in the Squamish Reporter that states how SRWS restored Newport Creek, allowing fish access once again to the headwaters. And just so Squamish River Watershed Society is SRWS. I'm sorry if I missed that. E. Toby was quoted as saying, "We redirected a portion of the water flowing down Newport Creek along a fish-friendly water course that is fully accessible to the fish passage," which was great. They went in and did their work. "While these concerns obviously were the action, it must be understood that none of the changes of the water course or creek had actually been made by our company. None of the creek bed was on our lands, nor the lands which we purchased from Geribaldi Springs. Our work had been limited to the construction of the wall on the hillside above the creek, and any of the changes to the creek itself had been made at the time of the construction of the golf course several years before. The wall was installed on lands that we owned, although portions encroached on the boundary of the golf course lands with the knowledge and consent of the golf course owner." Again, that was Sid Brickman, who was involved in that. "And this was so we did not coincide with the original approvals that had been granted. That simple fact, which might have entered the inquiry, did not impress our accusers, and the matter proceeded. Through a process referred to as restorative justice, we met with interested parties and agreed to a settlement, which involved the donation of material, labor, and cash."
Kathy, I need you to wrap up. Your five minutes are up, but...
My five minutes are up.
Yeah, I know.
Wow, okay.
Thanks. If you're not finished, we can come back later in the agenda.
No, I have to go back to work, so I can't. I'll just quickly say that my father was sick and had passed away. Our family decided we couldn't deal with really this anymore, so we ended up going to restorative justice and making a settlement. But because of the work that we were advised should not have been authorized, we're very, very concerned about this roadway and trail, and if that work's approved, we obviously will have to have our case reopened and looked into, and we'll be seeking compensation. You know, SRWS received a large amount of money, and they undertook the work according to the initiative, and that's great. But this little, the trail, that the trail access, which was on the map previously, it goes right behind the houses and the rock wall, and there isn't really room there to do any work, and without making a huge disruption on things. So basically, if you could please just make sure, if you do continue to support this, that you will not allow any work to be undertaken in that specific area right behind the houses on Rockridge Place.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I had determined to take a break at 8 o'clock. It's 8:03 right now. We'll take a five-minute break. When we come back, we have Shane, and then Pam Kozdrowski is on deck. Thanks, everyone. We're in recess. You ready? Thank you, everybody. We're going to reconvene the meeting. I just want to remind everyone to please be courteous to all the speakers, and don't clap or applaud in any way. So first up, we have Shane Malloy. And on deck is Pam Kostrowski. Please state your name and address, and if you represent yourself, a business, or an organization.
Good evening. My name is Shane Malloy. I live at 1485 Maple Crescent in Brackendale. I'm kind of in a unique position here. I'm a 45-year citizen of Squamish, and I'm also the guy that cuts the grass. I'm the one that keeps it looking like it does. So my concerns are, we have these people up in the new development who say we're going to tear down forests and change the land. Well, first of all, the land has been cleared for 20 years. We did not cut down a forest, or we're not going to cut down a forest, or blast away to mountainside for two and a half years to make room for a few lots. So let's get that out of the way. That's one of my beefs. The second is, they say they got 1,800 votes against. Well, it's my understanding, there's 18,000 people in Squamish, from the last statistics or I read somewhere. So what I see in the future, as a citizen, is this park, this green space, to handle this rapid growth that we're having in town, which is not finished yet. We all know that. We're not, you know, we're not under a cloud here. We know that development has not stopped yet. So to allow this development, and in turn, to get a green space that is needed now, and will be needed in the future as a park, and once it's a park, it'll always be a park. You can't change that. So I think that's, all I have to say is that I'm here for the residents, the 80% of the people in this town who've never seen that property, who've never been out there because they're law-abiding and don't trespass, whereas a lot of people around that property trespass, I'll let you know. So I just want to see that park for my community, for my long-term community that I plan to spend the rest of my life in this town. You know? I want a park where I can go, where I can picnic, I can view the scenery, view this beautiful valley, the Tantalus Range. This is what I'd like. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Pam Kostrowski, and on deck is Dwayne Cress. And I do just want to say, there's the odd person who's signed up twice. I want to get through all the list of first-time speakers first, and then we'll add second-time speakers at the end of the list. Please state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business, or an organization.
Pam Kostrowski, 41050 Tantalus Road, Squamish, and concerned citizen representing myself. I am one of the exhausted and worn-down citizens, and have, you've all received my multitude of emails. Hopefully, you've read some of them. I have great frustration with this, so I have very little to say. I'd like to make three solid points to state for the record. The residents of Greenside State, there was a slide earlier that shows flooding to our property line. We have never agreed to that. The Polygon came out, we did a community visit, whatever you want to call it, and that's something they said they wanted to do, and everyone stood up and said, "Absolutely do not, we do not want flooding to our property line." Second point is parking on Dawood and Tantalus. If we look at all, at what's happening at Perth right now, if we talk to anybody in our neighborhoods, anybody that rides a bike, anybody that goes outside, what those poor folks are dealing with is essentially what you're hexing the folks on Dawood and Tantalus with, because there's no parking. If that's going to be a trailhead, we're going to have people defecating in people's lawns, changing in people's front yards. It's already happening, actually. I walk that road every night. I see one bare bottom at least every evening, free of charge. Third point is to the petition that 1,800 people in this town signed to Adams Point. 600 people signed it since we spoke last, and it reads, and it does not state anything about, anything. This is exactly what it says. This is what 1,800 people have signed off on. Garibaldi Springs Golf Course should remain a greenway corridor as laid out in the official community plan. We are opposed to council approving condo townhouse, a condo townhouse development on this environmentally sensitive land, while there still is ample land suitable for development of infill housing elsewhere in Squamish. We request the council uphold the community's plan for this area, and ensure that this and other sensitive land does not become for sale to the highest bidder. That's all. That's what we asked, 1,800 people in this community have asked for. And I think I'm going to leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Dwayne Cress, and on deck is Spencer Fitchin.
Hello, I'm Dwayne Cress. I live at 40167 Bill's Place in the Highlands. You know me as the Bike Race Guy. I'm the organizer for the Spawkus Mountain Bike Race. Yes, we are here at another meeting. I've got four family birthdays that I've been at meetings so far this year. Speaking to timing, I don't know when there is a good week in anyone's life this day. We're busy all the time. There's just, there's nothing to it. You cannot pick a day when it's perfect for everyone. My two kids are actually here. We've got hockey, we've got school. We do everything we can to do what we feel is good for the community when we can, and to some part, hosting a mountain bike event, or organizing a mountain bike event that is much larger than me, or, you know, anything I imagined. That's, to me, that's a positive. You know, some may not think so, but, you know, for a small part, I think that kind of activity and the tourism it draws helped put us where we are right now. You know, it's somewhat ironic that, you know, unfortunately, I'm going to flip back and forth from an organizer of an event and a citizen as well, because I am seeing some behaviors and activities in town that are starting to concern me. And certainly, it's a pointing of the finger, and the last person in town becoming the biggest problem. I think, we know the Lager Sports Ground was, for the most part, marshy lands. It was now infill, all done by volunteer work for the greater community, or greater good of the community. What I understand, I'm not 100% sure, but I think where we are right now was infill as well. There's been changes, man-made, nature-made, to this valley here multiple times. Doesn't take much to go and drill down any portion of this earth and find different geological events, man-made and nature-made. While I respect that we do not want to alter nature, I also respect when there are efforts made to preserve it, when there is, and I will echo Chessie's comments, that we should take a look at preserving parks, or large, in this case, 86% of the land, with the developer now, instead of rolling the dice and hoping for the best in the future, because we could see more density in there. Things will change. All things change. Change happens. There's been several incorrect comments, and I guess it's just people gleaning on things that are personal to them, and I can understand that, and I can understand their frustrations. Everybody's worried about parking. Some of the parking that along Tantalus Way that has happened in the past in biking lanes, on, at least in my respect, have been done through permit through the district, special events permits. But if I'm parking my car on the street because my garage is full, I'm also taking up a spot from my neighbor, who may have a full garage. I don't see that as a concern of other people, or the community. It's just becoming another thing that is just not in my backyard, but I want to do that in my backyard. This town was a resource town, lost the resources. It struggled to become a tourist spot. It is a tourist spot. We're struggling with that, but for the most part, we are a bedroom community. We all have to look at changes. And maybe three cars and parking on the street doesn't fit that anymore.
Can everyone grab their keys and just go click-click and see if it's them? No?
And if someone did that on purpose with their keys, that was, that was clever. Good on you. I'm, you know, I'm an event organizer. The Polygon Development, they're great people. They come up here, they do the event, they come here to ride. A lot of that company comes here to ride. They recognize Squamish. And yes, they were financial contributors, but it's that park space. Without that park space, you can't do it. The Testamental Event used to happen here, but the town grew fast around it, and we didn't make preparations for safe corridor connections to the trails from here. There's another example. It's sitting there. We can do that. We can have safe corridor connections from the Highlands to the Lowlands. It's there. So, you know, what I also see just in the area immediately, for people incorrectly calling that green space, when I've set up the course on there, the, most of the houses along the south side of Dawood Drive, that backed directly onto Polygon, all have pathways or stepways down onto Polygon, where they enjoy walking their dogs. But I also notice construction debris blowing across the lands all the time from these same houses and developments. I've noticed them for the two years that I've been hosting the event there. I have actually picked up some of it. And I also notice that the last two homes on Dawood Drive, or Dawood Drive, with their compression load, on the second last house, after the compression load was complete to dig out the foundation, rocks and boulders from that basement were placed onto Polygon's land, or the quote-unquote "green space." I don't see any continuity with people describing it as green space and treating it as green space. I see burnt-out fires all over that place. It is, it's being used by a small portion of the community selfishly. That's it.
Thank you. Just a reminder, I'm going to be strict with the times, out of respect for all the speakers that still have to come. Spencer Fitchin, and then on deck is Lisa Turpin.
Spencer Fitchin, 2298 Greenwood Way in Garibaldi Highlands. I'll make it brief, just in case somebody else goes over time. A couple of concerns. I do very much agree with what Edith and Chessie had originally talked about with the restoration of the wetlands. This property was, it was, you know, irreparably harmed by the construction of a golf course. There was supposed to be mitigation put in place to help with the impacts to salmon and other aquatic species that were there, and they never worked. Nobody was ever held accountable to it. There's a Department of Fisheries and Oceans that was basically neutered by past federal governments. It hasn't been replaced, and their legislative powers haven't been replaced. Canadian Environmental Assessment Act was revoked. Fisheries Act was mostly torn up. Staffing and resourcing from the federal government, I mean, all of these things that are talked about in part of the original presentation, about, you know, other departments who have actually approved or looked after this, they're all gone, and they've not been put back in place to help. So it comes from there down to the Province Ministry of Environment. They're really, they're missing in action as well. And then this gets put down to the municipality. Does the municipality have the qualifications and the individuals who can actually do a proper assessment, or evaluate an assessment that's been done on this property? It does concern me greatly. This is some of the most important, if not the most important wetland habitat within the boundaries of the District of Squamish. It's been hacked up, they've tried to do mitigation, it's failed, it's been death by a thousand cuts. When Rock Ridge was put in, they destroyed more habitat. Then there was compensation again. We don't know if that worked. And now we're proposing to do potentially some repair to the south end, where really all of the original creeks and the, basically the big sponge exists at the south end of the property. We're leaving a corridor open, potentially for the municipality to decide whether or not to put a bridge through, right across Meagan Creek at the end of Newport Drive. So I'm really wondering, what does it mean when we talk about environmental space, you know, parkland, preserve? What are, what are the restrictions to it? Oh yeah, we're just going to leave that open so we can decide whether or not we put a bridge and a road over it, to access another development. Which brings me to my final point that I'll address, which is, this development should be considered, at least in part, with the two other parcels, one to the east of it and one to the north of it. To do this in isolation, when we're talking about parking and transportation issues and public access, and, you know, the types of development, the, you know, it was spoken to about stormwater management, the parcel to the east of it is the stormwater to recharge this sponge for the habitat. So this, you know, really needs to be done, and of course, with Chimahtlands as well. When we're talking about transportation issues, those issues are going to multiply by orders of magnitude. It's not just this tiny little development what is considered in, you know, in the, you know, full aspect of what's going on. And to address this independently, I think is probably an error. I've said what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Turpin, and on deck, E. Horace Luvnia.
Good evening, mayor and council and staff, and fellow residents, and probably the developers as well. My name's Lisa Turpin. I'm at 40278 Kintyre Drive, new resident to Squamish, 44-year vet on the Cedar Sky Highway, former councillor in Lions Bay, twice over. So I have just a couple of questions, more on the fiscal, and I appreciate you can't answer questions directly, but I just want to make sure that they're conscious in your mind going forward. One of them that caused me some alarm was that we're only getting $6 a square foot in the CACs. So when I do the math, someone else did some math, which was great, I'm coming up with $9,903.22 per unit, which equates to about four years of annual taxation, if you take out the school tax, and so the municipal base of that taxation. And what I'm noticing, having come here and been a resident on the corridor and utilized the assets in Squamish, most of the residents and buildings have outlived their purposefulness and are at capacity. So when I look at that $9,903 per new resident, that's not what every other resident in this community has put in. And where is that, when and if, when is that money going to start coming into building additions onto facilities? Also, while it's great that they're putting in a daycare, which is also a passion of mine, I was the daycare in Lions Bay, it's great, but who's going to run that space? How are the logistics of that going to work out? If you've got a daycare up on Kintyre, she wants to have space, is this a free space? Is this a rent space that goes into the strata? What are those logistics going to be? And then, how is the school district impacted with this as well? They're trying to get away from having the portables. We're building more capacity within the community, so I'm just a little curious and conscious of that as well. And back in my day, which was 10 years ago, but MOT required that new development on the side of the highway, Ansel Place for Seascapes, and Porto Cove, which hasn't even built out yet, had to put in their overpasses. So the interconnectivity, I know Porto Cove came before Lions Bay and said, "What could we do better with the Porto Cove plan?" And we said, "You need to have emergency turnarounds, live by our shortcomings, because we can't interconnect Lions Bay. If we have a forest fire, they're all done." So, but Porto Cove, they built emergency access roads, so that was nice to see. So that was nice to see that you can remove the barriers and that kind of thing. But when is that overpass coming? If they're only giving half a million or 580 to the traffic plan, that is only $1,870.96 per unit, which really doesn't sound like a lot when you consider the whole taxation base and that traffic plan. Eventually, it is going to need an overpass. You look at the impacts from the Grand Fondo on the Highlands now, they're trapped. Eventually, the overpass is going to need to occur. So the long-term budgeting as developments move forward, I'm neither for nor against, but I'm happy to be here and listening and appreciate everybody's work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ihor Zalubniak and on deck is Matt Blackman.
Please do not handle the microphone. Good, good instruction. My name is Ihor Zalubniak. I live at 2302 Greenwood Way. Sorry Patty. Your worship. I'm the Realtor that was referred to. And I did not say all development is good. I said, everybody in this town lives in a development and that's been good for them. All right? Nobody here, they always make that joke, the first guy into the bush is a explorer, the second guy's a developer. Anyways, if I'm lucky, maybe somebody in this crowd will buy a unit in Garibaldi Springs when it's developed, but that's my total sort of interest and involvement with them. We've heard a lot of talk about 6,000 units plus being built in Squamish right now. Well, those are all south of the Mamquam. And they're all condos or townhouses, very little single family. We've got 90 units in Sky Ridge consisting of condos, duplex and townhouses. That's it. We haven't had a multifamily north of the Mamquam River in a decade. But we're being told that we can't do anything here because it's more important that everything gets done downtown. And I think that's truly unfair to us that don't want to live downtown and open up our sliding doors and have the Squamish wind blow the furniture to the other end of the room. That's just a personal, I ran into that in Suk. Beautiful units, open the sliding doors and the wind out of the Strait of Wanda Fuka, you had to lean to stand on your porch. So what's this all about? This is about a developer who wants to build houses, wants to make some money. That's his job, that's their job. And the district that has a series of needs and concerns with regards to livability, protection of green space, protection of environmentally sensitive areas. Now, as a Realtor, I know that every transaction has two parts and each of those parts has costs and benefits. So when you look at this and what Garibaldi Springs, Polygon's proposal there has given up, not given up, sorry, that's the wrong word, but ameliorated over time to reflect the demands, I guess, of council, of public. They're down to whatever it is now, 300 units, but there's a big whack of land in there right now that's being given over as green space in perpetuity. Well, that looks like a big win for the district to me. That's a lot of land that's going to be given over for the use of the public. Right now, it's private land and I had a conversation the other day with a guy and I said, you know, what if Polygon restricts access? And he said to me, oh, they'll never do that. They need their public image protected. And I thought, you unethical, because you're exploiting somebody else's goodwill or lack thereof to push forward another agenda. And I was appalled to hear that. I just couldn't believe that that comment came out. And there's a law in warfare. And if you won't stoop to the level of your opponent, they will use your goodwill against you. Now, if you really want to think about what that means is, if you want to take the high road in a conflict or in a transaction and the other person won't, it's going to cost I think that Polygon has been taking the high road. I think that they've responded extremely well to every demand that's been made over time on this piece of land. And it's been disturbed, we know that. If you've ever been on that land and walked around on it, I don't think there's another piece of land that's as level and as compacted in the whole valley here, other than the golf course down off Mamquam Road. So when does Squamish North get its middle missing housing? And I call it Squamish North or North of the Mamquam or Southern Brackendale, I don't care what you want to call it. But when do we get ours? Well, here we have a proposal to put some in. And as compared to whatever else has been put in in the district, I think we've been left out. One of the things we've talked about is limiting sprawl. It takes longer to get from the top of the university area to downtown than it does from here to downtown. This is an infill project. This is not sprawl. Sprawl will be when there are houses built to the north of Depot Road. Maybe that's sprawl. So anyway, here we have a deal. Council has to protect the interests of the municipality and the developer wants to build some houses. So meet in the middle, find a way to do it. Don't just shut it down because someone mentioned before at one of the previous meetings will wait till the demand is necessary. You don't know what that's going to look like in 20 years. In 20 years, that could be totally filled in and condos built on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Blackman and on deck is Maxim Charon. I have about five or six people after that, just if people are gauging.
I'm Matt Blackman. I'm speaking on behalf of Squamish Alternative Energy Group. I'm 40743 Thunderbird Ridge in Garibaldi Highlands. I originally opposed this development because I believe that new developments should incorporate an economic portion, not just housing. We don't want to be, I want to see the days slow that Squamish is just a residence for Vancouver commuters. So I really wanted to see more development in the way of commercial, business, office space. And I realize at this point in time, Polygon is not a, they're a residential developer, so I appreciate that. I have to say, I like the second development a lot better because of the 86% that we get to use as citizens, also the fact that the district gets 70 acres that it can use for future development in a positive way for an eco-park, ecotourism, because we are basically a tourist destination. So I also would like to see though, as far as the developers concerned, and we are the Squamish Alternative Energy Group, to work more favorably towards putting alternative energy into the development, even rough in for solar panels, car chargers, because we are moving into the new industrial revolution, which is the green revolution. I think we need to be ready for that. I'd love to see a development that highlights renewable energy and would be the first in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Maxim Charon and on deck is Susan Bourbon.
Hi, so my name is Maxim Charon, 1355 Depot Road. I'm here to represent myself just as a Squamish resident. There are people that are either opposed or for the project. I think we're focusing on this project without really seeing the big picture of other projects that are being put on the table. And let's be honest, we're in Squamish, everything around here is around the environment, whatever we're talking about. Water, forests, and every single project that's going to be proposed will have some sort of environmental impact, whether it's wildlife, water, wetlands, whatever it is, we'll have to deal with that. However, we can look at how to minimize it. And if we're looking at other projects, just like the Chikai Fan project, which will have to clear cut pretty much many acres where there's trails and wildlife, bears, there's wolves every spring that go there because we live right next to it. And then we're also going to have to build a barrier just in case of the Chikai Fan goes down, which will, according to the reports that I've read today, was $900,000 worth of maintenance every year for the district if it's not shared with the developer. Now we have a project here where it's actually very minimal in the environment, which many of previous speakers said that it would actually improve the environmental status of the current land. And it might, like many other people said, it might be status as a green space, however, is it really usable? And for many people, we are in the woods, we are going in trails and this land is not used as much as it could be if there's the development moving forward. Now, in the previous years, there's been some, I mean, as part of the Squamish Board, we have a lot of companies coming up wanting to grow their business, but we're lacking industrial and commercial lands. This one will allow us to not have to rezone any industrial and commercial land and keeping jobs or creating jobs in Squamish, which as per the last stats was over 10,000 people are either commuting north or south of town, which is really not sustainable for our economy here. And really, we are a bedroom economy, but we could do a lot better in the planning to really have an economic growth development. Can't remember where I read that, but over 80% of full-time jobs in Squamish are directly or indirectly related to the development industry, which means that at some point, at this rate, in 10, 15, 20 years from now, the valley is going to be pretty much full. And what is that going to leave for the job industry at that time if we can't build anymore? So really what I'm thinking is that this project is really good for us as part of the environment, which will minimize the impact on the environment compared to other project that has been put forward. And we'll also avoid to have to rezone any other lands and losing more and more industrial and commercial lands in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Susan Bourbon. Then I have Dion Burke, Gwen Young, Jerry Goodwin and Chessie Knight. And that's the end of my list. So if you would like to speak after that, either go into the hallway and write your name down or put your hand up if I run out of people on my list.
Susan Bourbon, 41120 Rock Ridge Place. Dear Council, Mayor, I'd like to raise concerns with respect to public use of common strata property and the proposed trail network based on my personal experience with strata governance. The proposal states that the strata trails are approximately 1.9 kilometers in total to be confirmed in detail with future development permits for each parcel. The LDA will require a statutory right of way to secure public use of the strata trails. The enforced public use statutory right of way raises questions. Who's responsible for maintaining public use trails in the strata common area? Are strata bylaws applicable to the public, such as those around noise, pets, smoking, parking? If not, how will this be dealt with? Are we expecting the strata to carry liability insurance that covers public access to trails? To my understanding, BFL, the largest insurance provider to stratas in BC, has never insured a strata corporation that provides public access. The latest public access chart indicates that the public has a right of way on all strata roads. Will the roads need to meet standard for public roads? Would this not mean substantially wider roads? I'm assuming that's not the case, but once again, who's managing the roads? The public has access to these roads, but the strata is responsible for cleaning, plowing, repairing the roads? How is public parking versus visitor parking addressed by a strata? Who maintains the fire access road if in public hands, even though it is a required element for the strata development? From my experience, strata developments and public use don't mix well. Most people who buy into strata aren't really aware of what's involved. They believe that the monthly fee quoted will be sufficient to cover all costs. This is usually the case only for the first year or two, and this without being responsible for publicly accessed areas. My concern is that all Squamish taxpayers will be on the hook for significant ongoing costs, while Polygon will profit significantly from the development. This is just one of my many reasons why I'm against the proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwen Young and Dion Burke is on deck.
Gwen Young, 41205 Rock Ridge. I was going to speak to the petition to keep Garibaldi green, but Pam touched on it before me. I just wanted to make one comment because I've heard in the room tonight that 1,800 signatures isn't a lot in a community of 19,000, 20,000. I would argue that it in fact is when you consider that at the last elections, 6,000 people, just over 6,000 people showed up to vote. And that was a matter of governance for the next four years of this community. I love living in this town. I adore the people here, but showing up to things like this, even when they're incredibly passionate about it, generally doesn't happen. And I'm sure a lot of the councils in America attest to that. So I just wanted to put that figure out there to put the 1,800 in actual perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Dion Burke and on deck is Jerry Goodwin.
Hello Dion Burke. I live at 1012 J Crescent in the Highlands. Been at each one of these meetings, I've spoken before, I've made a whole speech, I'm going to keep it very short and sweet. This proposal, good, bad and different, I don't care. There's been all kinds of positives and negatives said about it. Personally, I'm not for it for the very simple reason is that Squamish needs to develop in a sustainable, proper way. There's so much haphazard development around town, it's not funny. I live in the Highlands. Our subdivision was developed once upon a time. It was treased once upon a time. It was all cut down, houses were put up, and that was back in 2008. Still to this day, there's vacant lots in that property. Should be developed before this. Where that 86% number is, that whole piece of land is already zoned residential, hasn't been developed. All that huge land, already zoned residential, owned by the Holden Group that also owned the property up in the Highland, up in the University Heights. All kinds of land up there, sitting undeveloped, already zoned residential. Go down Aristotle, there's a chain link fence. Walk past that chain link fence, all kinds of services already put in, already zoned, already ready for residential. Why hasn't it been developed? There's no need. This is zoned green space. Our official plan says keep it green space. Maybe it becomes a park, maybe 86%. Right now, it's 0%. But maybe there'll be for some foresight down the road from councillors to say, you know what? Somehow we got to find a way to purchase this land and make it 100% green space, 100% accessible for the public. There's an election in a month. Probably half the council here today already stated they won't be running or they're running for other departments, may or may not get in. You don't have the moral compass to vote on this today because we're going to be left holding the bag, one way or the other, not the current councillor. Thank you.
Please do not, please do not clap. Thank you. Jerry Goodwin and on deck is Chessie Knight. And that's the, oh, and then Andreas Albit and that's the end of my list. Thank you very much.
Chessie Knight, President of the Squamish River Watershed Society. I live at 40741 Highlands Way North, and I think we need a little levity right about now. I know for a fact that one of my friend's dog signed that petition, so I don't know. I want to speak to Kathy Smiley's letter submitted today, W Dowd Limited corporate, her corporate letterhead. She's speaking to concerns about the emergency access that Polygon is proposing to build at the north end of the property, which would impact a portion of the minimal riparian habitat and a portion of the pond at the northernmost end of the property. And I think all, many of us have spoken at length about the poor habitat quality of that pond and the fact that anything that, any developer, whether it's Polygon or anybody, any developer, if they were going to impact that habitat, which is technically habitat under the old Fisheries Act authorization, they would have to provide compensation for, and they are doing that. So I just want to straighten out a couple of important inaccuracies in the letter because I may be reading too much into it, but it either sounds like it's painting Polygon in a bad, bad light. And again, this would be any developer on that property now and/or the Watershed Society. So I want to just... So I want to just straighten out a couple of things from that letter. That rock wall that Ms. Smiley referred to them building as part of their approved subdivision, in fact, that subdivision was approved, and it was completely separate from the property boundary of the golf course. They were two distinct properties. What most people don't know, unless you go out and look at that site, is that retaining wall is 50 feet tall, at a two-to-one slope. So if you're looking at a plan view of the subdivision, it's quite clear that that rock wall does not infringe on the development of the golf course or on the creek, that was, ended up being at the bottom of the wall with the wall inside the creek. But again, if you, if you build a 50-foot-tall retaining wall at a two-to-one slope, that pulls the slope out 100 feet when it's on the ground. And so you can kind of figure out, if you're looking at it vertically now, a cross-section, you've got the top of the wall here, and the toes way out here in the creek. So that, that was not approved construction, that was a Fisheries Act violation. And I know that for a fact, because I was the habitat biologist, the expert witness for DFO, who worked with our lawyer and fisheries, fisheries officers on that prosecution. And it did go to restorative justice. And the reason that the money went to the Watershed Society is because that is how the Watershed Society is set up. We work with so many different funding partners. We work with industry, we work with governments, all levels of government, we work with BC Hydro. We are set up so that we can receive funds, and then we work with, a lot of times, DFO's Resource Restoration Unit to design restoration projects. We work with consultants like Mike Nelson, we work with all kinds of people. But that's the model. At that time, we needed a place to park that money. That money did not go into the pocket of Edith Tobey. That money did not get spent by the Watershed Society on beer. We spent it on habitat restoration. And I could go lengths at how we spent it, but it doesn't matter. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andreas Albert is my last speaker, and then I'm going to go to staff to see if there's any questions or comments that need addressing.
Thank you, Andreas Albert, 41120 Rock Ridge Place. If you could go back to Slide 7 of my deck, I want to talk a bit more about Phase 2, just looking at the details, where I look for gaps and concerns. What I think many of us are concerned as residents is clearcutting. If you guys did a trip up to the university, you know how ugly it's looking up there. I would like to avoid that here. What I would like to point out, and let's start actually from where we just talked, if the access road for the fire department goes in, what you will see is, from Dow Drive, the trees along the road will go. The trees at the bottom of the 50-foot, or however tall the rock wall actually is, will go. So everyone will actually have a nice big view of another big rock wall. Then as you go up the property, we will lose some of the trees on the edge, you know, to get views for the residents. The middle section, the trees will go, because we put housing there, because it doesn't fit. Dow Drive doesn't have any trees, Skyridge doesn't have any trees. Then Phase 2 cuts another big hole into it. And now look at Dow Drive. Dow Drive, how deep under, under grade is the road? So in order to actually do the Chima Lands, you're going to blow half the mountain away again. So we're going to clear another huge chunk off. So now stand back and think about what we're actually looking at as a neighborhood. We're looking basically at a wasteland with no trees. If I drive to Whistler, everyone is impressed what you see, because Whistler had a foresight in terms of how to design neighborhoods, not wastelands. You don't drive through Whistler and see wastelands. Can we not have the same? I'm not against development, but I would like to see a balance, a balance of attractive neighborhoods. That's what I care about. The same point here is, there is an alternative to the emergency access road, but it requires foresight. On the left-hand side on Page 8, you see the Chima Lands proposal for their initial draft. The continuation of Dow Drive, you know, turning into a road to the right, and you're actually having a road go across the top, where you actually could connect another access to Phase 2. It's a timing issue, but it's the big picture infrastructure, what I'm looking for. What does it actually improve? It improves actually the safety of the main connection road between Phase 1 and 2. It is actually really a straight shot down the hill. It's a dangerous road, what will be in the winter guaranteed on accident, fender bender, and risk to people. It would eliminate the pond fill-in, it would eliminate cutting down trees at the bottom. It actually provides shade to the pond, which actually improves fish habitat, which is gone in the other case as well. So overall, actually, the Phase 1 connector could be used as the emergency road, main road from up top, which actually creates a safer road and multiple benefits across, by picking actually the right foresight overall. The other thing what we're avoiding is actually dumping salt, oil into Newport Creek, because you have a long rundown, the road's going to be plowed, you know where the snow and the salt ends up. It ends up in the creek, it ends up in the pond, it ends up in the watershed. And that's difficult to avoid. So I'm just asking for foresight. Phase 3 and 4, a lot of it has to do with critical habitat, as a lot of us have been talking about. There was a lot of comments made early on around the Pacific Water Shrew, 100-meter buffer recommended by experts. So the important point here, especially when you look at the graphs, it has actually a huge bearing on where you would develop if you actually follow 100 meters. And we actually sampled multiple, multiple groups on that side. So there is the recovery strategy for the Pacific Water Shrew Species at Risk Act with 100-meter protection. But what it actually is, when you look at the 100 meters, it's to address the threat due to urban development, pollution, and domestic paths. And that's actually, it's killing endangered species. So what you want, you want actually distance in order to ensure endangered species. The Ministry of Environment, it was actually, the point was made by Susan, well, it's private land, it's not applicable. And that's actually the point here, is you are actually now controlling what actually happens. As soon as the next level goes forward, you're not in control anymore. It's private land, they have the right to develop, you don't have actually any say in it anymore. Currently, you actually have the say, if you actually want to respect critical habitat or not. So from that perspective, a couple of key things to stand out. Buffets should include permanence, should preclude permanent structures. You know, the access by humans and pets, as pointed out there, was also an issue. The buffer is on private land, it should be protected using a covenant. Some of that can happen. Vanessa Craig, we contacted her, she's an expert member on the member for the Pacific Water Shrew Recovery Team. And her feedback in a letter, and I provided in the appendix more detail, pointed out that the buffering habitat does in itself need not to be suitable for the shrew. So you have to actually keep in mind, distance is an important factor to protect habitat as well. If I could just take a few more minutes to finish a couple of other points, otherwise, I'm happy to wait for another turn. Thank you.
Thank you. We can come back to you, Andreas, if you'd like to speak more. I want staff to have an opportunity to maybe speak to some of the questions and comments if they need clarification. I'll just do a quick poll of hands if there's anyone else who would like to speak. So it looks like there's five or six people, so why don't we go to staff quickly? Hopefully, you've been keeping a list, because I lost track a long time ago, of things that need addressing. Jonas, do you want to kick it off, or?
Sure.
Okay.
There were...
Maybe, Jonas, just make sure you're speaking right into the mic. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? Can everybody hear me now? Yes. Thank you. So yes, there were a number of questions. We're going to try and answer some of the ones that came up over and over again, or some of the ones that we haven't answered in the presentation. I think there were a few questions about community amenity contributions, and whether, what kind of method have we used to calculate those, and whether any of those items are actually a requirement of development. So Susan, maybe we can go back to the slide with a list of CEC items. But essentially, the $6 a square foot is a policy, is an interim policy. The district adopted it probably three years ago now. It was meant to be interim. It kind of covered the period of time before we get to an actual policy. It's a starting point for discussions these days with development proponents, and quite often developments exceed that requirement, because it is somewhat outdated. So in this case, the overall CEC value is calculated at more of a $25 a square foot, and not $6 a square foot. And I'd like to also confirm that we took great care in making sure that none of the items on this list are included if they were a requirement, if somebody, let's say, came in, if this land was zoned and somebody was just applying for a development permit, none of these items would be something that the district would be able to require outright. So just wanted to make that clarification. There were also a few comments about the fact that there is a lack of oversight with respect to senior government agencies these days because of cuts and so forth, and that this is the opportunity to, for council to ensure that the ecological sensitivities are addressed. So we are securing this ability in the future, because the next phase, if this, if the bylaws are proceeded to adoption, the next phase will be development, environmental permit for development. So before any housing is considered, we're going to deal with the environmental parts of this parcel. And, and so that, that ability for, for the district to have a say is being secured in the land development agreement. I'll turn it over to Susan, if you have anything else.
Just one comment from me. This is a follow-up in, to the comments from the Squamish River Watershed Society. That was a mistake on my part to quote their letter as being in support of the project. They did make that point at a previous public hearing, and I'd just like to acknowledge that. I was trying to compress things onto a single slide and didn't express that properly. So I'd like to just clarify that.
Are there any, were there any other things that you feel need addressing at this point?
I believe the staff report and the presentation covered off some of the other questions that were raised.
Okay. I have a question from Council Chappell, and I'll give council an opportunity to ask questions, and then we'll go back out to the, hopefully, the final few people.
Thank you. Jonas, I'm asking about the possibility, is it, just as far as process is concerned, is it possible to secure green space and parks in our OCP with a covenant without land use development agreements?
No. Any covenant has to be voluntary. So we don't have a, if somebody comes in for a development permit, let's say, so after a rezoning is done.
Without a rezoning? I'm just talking about in an official community plan, is it possible for a community to secure parks and green space in their official community plan?
On private property?
On private property.
On private property?
Or if it's so already.
Not without compensation.
Thank you. With compensation, though.
Yes, so if...
So it is possible, but it requires compensation.
It would require compensation, yes.
And, and just to clarify, compensation would be, would the district have to expropriate? Like, I'm just trying to understand, compensation dollar-for-dollar value of the property?
I'm going to turn it over to Susan. Susan?
Sorry, I was trying to just nudge him. There has been some test cases in court on this, about communities kind of coloring things green in their OCP. And the case law really has been fairly clear that you have to either have the ability to acquire that land at the time of subdivision for park, as part of a park dedication, or you have to have it in your five-year capital plan with funds to purchase it. So you can't simply color it green with the expectation that you might get it in the future. You have to have a concrete way of achieving that financially.
Sorry, it's already green. We don't have to color it green. It's already green.
Well, you can't, let me, let me restate that. You can't designate a piece of private land as park in your OCP.
It's not a...
It's not, it's not public park. You can't designate it as a public park unless you have opportunity to acquire it through subdivision, or you have it in your five-year capital plan to purchase it.
Thank you. Counselor Race, and then Counselor Elliott.
Oh, no. There was one, one speaker, and I forget who it was, made the comment about the area that's being set aside as a conservation area, possibly being developed by the district in the future for some kind of employment lands for recreation activities, et cetera. And I just want to clarify, because my understanding is that the proposal would have a restrictive covenant on those lands in favor of not just the district, who could, if they wanted to, just change their own covenant, but also in favor of a third-party conservation group. So the intent is not to allow that. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, that is correct. Both the zoning and OCP secure it in terms of land use, and the covenant restates the purpose that those lands can be used for, which is conservation. And the land development agreement commits the district prior to issuance of the first development permit to enter into an agreement with a third-party environmental organization. It can't be included in the land development agreement itself, because the district has not yet owned the land. So the way it has been structured, and this is going through the lawyers, is that third-party conservation covenant will be required to be in place prior to issuance of any development permit.
Thank you. Questions from council? I've got Counselor Elliott and Counselor Blackmanwell.
Thank you. So just wanting to confirm the parking that will be on Tanalus. Is there still a bike lane on Tanalus? Or are we directing all bike traffic through the extended corridor trail as this proceeds?
Through the mayor. Those details are yet to be worked out. The thought is that it would be preferable to get bike and pedestrians onto the corridor trail extension that would be constructed as part of this, to get that off the road and onto the multi-use path adjacent to the road, so there are no conflicts with traveling vehicles as well as parked vehicles.
Thank you. Also, maybe Susan, building on what you were just saying about the third-party covenant, I just want to clarify in the report, the Newport Road Extension, if it's ever needed, is that, will that be an exception in the, in the reserve? Or would we make sure that a third party would require us to get their permission in order to do that Newport Ridge Extension?
Through the mayor. We haven't got those details worked out with the lawyer yet. That's kind of one of the more tricky clauses. But the direction, as we understood it from council, was that the district wants to secure the ecological reserve in perpetuity, and that's the reason for the third-party environmental organization. But the district wants to reserve the right to consider whether they may want to extend Newport Ridge Drive in the future, and that would be a district decision. So how to have that as an exception in the agreement is something, we don't have the language for that yet, the lawyers are still working on it. But that is the goal, is that the district would make the ultimate determination as to whether they need that, that Newport Ridge Drive extension.
My last question, there's a question about how we combine strata rules and strata maintenance on, with public access on trails and public access on strata roads. And I'm wondering if you can speak to examples where that's managed, or who, who carries the insurance, who does the maintenance? I thought that was a good question.
Thank you for the question. That is a good question. And we're seeing these situations more and more in the district. So normally, it's the strata's responsibility to do the maintenance work on all of the strata-owned property, and in this case, we'd have, the majority of the trails would be on district property, but there will be trails that go through the strata properties, and those will be maintained by the strata, and the district will have a public access right-of-way. And my understanding is that if there was an incident in those situations on, on private property with a public right-of-way, that the district's insurance would cover those,
Just to follow up, is that currently the situation on internal strata roads? So if there's an accident and... So if there's an accident and someone feels wronged by the accident, our insurance would cover it, not the strata's insurance to cover it? I, I guess it depends if there was negligence on the strata's part, but-
I'm not sure how much, statistically, how, how much that's happening in the district. We do have a lot of developments. Eagle Wind is again another one where there's public access and permeability through the site. But I don't know, I don't think we have the answer for that.
Thank you. Counselor Blackman-Wolfe.
All right. As I look across, the way I see a lot of decades of experience in the planning field, and I think that it makes, it's very clear that staff and consultants have done their best on this project and, and whatnot. Now, I wanted to know, based on your experience, is it common practice for a prospective developer to purchase a property that is not currently zoned for any residential use versus exploring an option to purchase subject to successful rezoning?
In the district, we see both, I can say. There is certainly, developers usually look for certainty, and, and so quite often, we get proposals in, and they're in transition in, in terms of ownership. But it's not unseen that a property is purchased and then rezoned.
I guess my follow-up to that question, though, would be, in the district of Squamish, is it common practice for a developer to purchase a property that is designated in the official community plan as green space and buy it outright with no condition subject to rezoning? So basically, OCP amendment-type, sort of differentiating it between that or something that already sort of fits within the official community plan? Have you seen anything else like that? I know, I know it's been, you know, I, I just, I think about my term on council, and I don't think I've seen anything like that. So I just wanted to make sure.
It's certainly not common practice.
I believe Chikai owned outright. We just approved it.
Oh, Chair? I think that question was for staff.
And they didn't answer it, I did. Thank you. I'm just saying that you asked. The Chikai is an example of it.
I asked staff, not the Chair. Thank you.
And the Chair's answering.
All right. So my second question is, while it is true that this property is a privately-held property, I guess my question for staff is, should this rezoning not be successful? What other options does a landowner have in this particular situation, particularly reflecting on the fact that there is actually a, a small portion of this property that is actually designated as future neighborhood residential? And if I'm not mistaken, actually has some zoning in place for that. And I just want to explore what that particular option is, and, and what, what would be available at that time, and how that would look if, if a developer found themselves in that situation.
So, yes, the northern, there's a northern piece of the property that is zoned residential, and it's designated residential, single-family. And so in keeping with the zoning, then the, the owner could apply for a subdivision of that northern parcel. And the rest of it is essentially a golf course use.
And if I'm not mistaken, can you confirm that subdivision approval? That is a delegated process, so the developer is not obligated to go through rezoning. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. So that's subject to approving officers' approval.
Thank you.
Any more questions from council at this point? I don't see any. Staff, are there any more lists out in the hallway? I don't believe there are. So just put your hand up, and I'll recognize you, and I'll ask you to come up. I will ask for people who haven't spoken yet first, and then we'll go back to people who have spoken multiple times. See a hand over here. Please come up and state your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business, or an organization.
Can you hear me? Yeah, my name is Doug Day. I live in Squamish, Vancouver, Desolation Sound, San Diego, about a quarter each. But my address here is for the purpose of this meeting, is 1400 Vancouver Street. Developers don't usually come out in favor for or against another developer's project. It's kind of a little code we have. So I'm not speaking in for or against this project. I just got a couple of things I wanted to mention. Firstly, Polygon and its senior officers are amongst the finest, if not the finest, in my opinion, people in this business in Canada. The chairman of the board has an Order of Canada and an Order of British Columbia, and I think they're the, probably the very best of the best. They just don't get any better than that in terms of integrity. But anyway, just got a few little notes. And it's a bit personal, because there was, mentioned a couple of times that this was a failed golf course. And in fact, it was not a failed golf course at all. The previous owner from China, from Hong Kong, was very well-capitalized, very wealthy man. He sold the golf course to me for pretty cheap, really. But it wasn't failed, he just decided he didn't want to operate it anymore. So, and it certainly wasn't abandoned. So the hotel manager, I think, if he's still here, I think his opening lines was Garibaldi Springs was a failed and abandoned golf course, but it wasn't. And I personally spent one and a half years of hard labor alongside my friend Shane over there, cutting grass and clearing off brush and basically reopening the golf course. So I bought it in November 2010, and reopened it in the spring of 2012, about a year and a half. And as a matter of fact, the dear friend of mine, the retired, now-retired Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of Canada, Beverly McLaughlin, officiated at the reopening of Garibaldi Springs in, I think it was May of 2012. And she and her husband and her sister and a bunch of us played a nice round of golf there. So there's another, so it wasn't a failed golf course. I bust my neck to reopen it. And one little mistake, I think, in the Polygon presentation, just a, just a, not a big deal, but in their introduction page, it says that these lands have not been publicly accessible since the golf course closed in 2010. But that's really not correct, because in May of 2012, we reopened the golf course. The lands were publicly accessible. You could play frisbee golf, soccer golf, or disc golf. As a matter of fact, we had the Canadian Disc Golf Championship on the property. So the public did have access to the property to play around. And we did gate off the northern half of the property, starting at the entrance to the Thunderbird Creek watershed, because those lands are incredibly sensitive lands, environmentally sensitive. There is a big beaver population there, which, as landowners, we weren't, we weren't exactly thrilled about, but anyway, they're there. And so it really wasn't, there was nothing for the public to do up there, anyway. There was nine holes of golf at the south end, and that was enough. One other thing that subject came up of zoning, I forget the lady's name at the end there, she mentioned about you couldn't make somebody have land zoned to park. Well, Garibaldi Springs, the vast bulk of the land, 118 acres of, of the 120-odd acres, is zoned for only two things, which kind of had me plummoxed for a long time. It was zoned for park or golf course. Those are the only two things you can actually do with that property. Now, the whole, the clubhouse is on a separate piece of property, about three acres, and that's zoned for hotel or bar or pub or whatever. But I found it very unusual that, that it was zoned that way. I've kind of never seen that. So that's just one other thing. Just made some random notes. I think I've got one more thing. Oh, somebody else asked just a minute ago, is anybody, I think Counselor Blackman-Wolfe asked, has this ever happened before, where somebody buys a piece of property with not knowing what's going to happen? Well, as a matter of fact, Bob Chima paid $33 million in round numbers, it might have been 32, $33 million to buy a few hundred acres, commonly now known as the Chima Lands, and it's zoned for basically forest. And I think he's been tearing his hair out ever since. But he did not, he didn't check that, or if he did check it, he, he didn't worry about it. As a matter of fact, Cameron Chalmers tells me that, when he was planner, that Chima didn't come to see him until two years after he bought the property for 33 million bucks. So it does happen every once in a while. Somebody just, on a leap of faith, they buy a piece of property. Anyway, I am very pleased with Polygon. I think they put together a pretty nice thing here. I can see it's quite emotional, and I can't take a position, it really would be completely improper. But anyway, I just wanted to confirm, it wasn't a failed golf course. It was kind of fun, actually. You could golf there for 10 bucks. Anyway, I hope I hadn't outlasted my 10 minutes. Thank you for listening.
You're about 15 seconds over. You're good. Thank you. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet who would like to speak at the public hearing? Yep, go ahead. State your name and your address, and if you represent yourself, a business, and an organization. And just a quick show of hands, who would still like to speak at the public hearing? Okay, there's about five or six people.
My name's Kevin Schumaker. I'm with Polygon Homes. I've been managing this application for the last two and a half years. I just really want to be brief. I just want to touch on a few clarifications. Number one, with respect to onsite visitor parking, we are not meeting the current bylaw. We're exceeding it by 10%. With respect to the potential for homes sitting empty, or the number of homes that are, I guess, in the approval stream, we are, what's not obvious in the land development agreement, I don't think it was mentioned, we're obligated to provide all of the community amenities upfront. So the, the park, the daycare, the trails, it's all done in the first phase with the first 60 homes. We're builders, we build for profit. We will not be building homes that sit empty. We will build homes to meet the demand. So if the market slows down, then the pace of development will slow down. It may take 10 years to build out this project, but we are obligated to provide everything There was a gentleman, or there were some, quite a few people actually talking about the numbers around profit as it related to CAC. It's an incredibly complex formula. I, we have never done it before, or at least I've never done it before, but we did share what we had as a pro forma with senior staff, just because there was, needed to be an understanding of the significant costs. The numbers that were quoted are talking about serviced land earlier. This is completely unserviced land. It's a very different formula. There was a question about the daycare and how that worked. The daycare will be built by Polygon. It is rent-free, and the operator is to be determined. But the only thing that that operator will be paying for will be the utilities, their share of the utilities in that building, and whatever furniture they put in. But the millwork, the building will be completely built out. I did also hear something about it being a basement. It is not. It walks out at grade, and, and a large part of the expense of the work we're doing there is to daylight the sides and make it open to the green space beside it. Just my last comment, with respect to maintenance of trails that have public access. The most probably common example would be the expo lands. Those are privately-held trails with an SRW for public access maintained by those stratas, 30 years plus, I guess. Every, I, I, I'm fortunate that I get to work on the larger master plans. I'd say almost every large plan we're doing now has some form of public access through PaaS. I sit on the stratas after we build the communities, so I sit through the budget talks. There's no problem with insurance, there's no problem with maintenance. It is a very common occurrence with developments, and it certainly has been for the last 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I saw one more hand of someone who hadn't spoken yet. Andreas, go ahead. Wait, wait till you get to the microphone.
Okay. So, Andreas Albert, 4112 Rockridge Place. Just trying to wrap up, so hopefully not taking very much time. So I had also a slide on community amenity contribution. My math worked a little bit differently. What I would encourage, have a look at what the real numbers are. That's basically what I think many of us are asking, our numbers. Give different numbers. I, my numbers are different than what we heard earlier. There is a discrepancy, at least what we see. You know, if you looked at the slide, you know, I use basically neighboring property as an example of what is published by B.C. Assessment, and end up with a discrepancy which seems large. I can't say that it's correct, that it covers every cases, but then let's put the cards on the table, and then, you know, I think what we're looking for is basically just fairness in the end, that we get basically a fair deal across for everyone on it. My other concern, the last key point here really, is maintenance strategy. So one of the pieces, and this is, I think, just a bigger element is, on the one hand is we're getting a greater ecological reserve, but on the other hand, we see basically for a developer, it's one way to actually set the back, send back the land what they can't develop to the community. We are picking up the maintenance. So that is a significant cost. It's $150,000. And your Counselor Chappell made the comment before, we didn't have money to mow the grass. So that's one of the concerns. So when I looked at just the municipal taxes, so I looked at a comparable duplex right next to the property, the numbers, what I got from a taxpayer bill in that complex was assessed at 788,000. So that should be relatively comparable, we should see in the new, which means 2,500 in municipal taxes. So that means the current resident pays about 13% of the municipal taxes in parks and recreation. If you look at a similar set of numbers for the new property, that means about 19% of that has to go to cover actually the additional bill for this one. And that doesn't cover what the maintenance cost is towards other facility those people use as well. So in the end, we have a gap there, which means the money has to come from somewhere. So that means for the rest of us, we have to pony up more taxes, or we're cutting back somewhere else. That's one of the challenges. And if we do it here, then I've seen the same discussion at the Chima Lands, right? Does the mountain bike reserve gets picked up by the district? Is the district now responsible for it? Because will Bob want to hold in the end the land? So the question continues, and that's, the question is, do we want that as a general model? I see obviously benefits in the ecological reserve, but it's a question of principle. So just in summary, why reject the rezoning? I see the lost green space, I see the lost recreational opportunity. It was interesting to hear that it wasn't actually a failed golf course. I see too many housing developments already. The clearcutting is probably my biggest aspect, that it's not what I wish as a neighborhood in Squamish. I wish beautiful neighborhoods, proper protection of endangered species and sensitive habitat, and the balance, what I at least saw between developer profits and community benefits, and long-term maintenance cost. And as many have commented on, we had, you know, a lot of people raise their voices on that side. In the last slide, I put basically a modified quote there. When the last tree is cut down, and that's when I looked at, what do I see outside my house? The last tree bare and salmon displaced, the last tree poisoned, will you realize that the once beautiful place is gone? And that's basically what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a beautiful place still to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just looking for, go ahead, Pam, and then Matt.
Pam Kostrowski, 41050 Tanalus Road, Squamish. Just want to touch on something Andreas was saying. Just want to touch on something Andreas was saying about proper protection of habitat, because he's absolutely right. In all the emails that you've received, all the agencies I've contacted, the federal government is not here to back you up. The provincial government is not here to back you up. This is on your shoulders to make this decision. And the private landowner is entirely, it's entirely voluntary for them to protect critical habitat. There is nothing that stipulates they have to do anything outside of this council's requirements in this application. So I just wanted to draw your attention to that, because if you've read the bio inventory assessment, I believe it's called, there's, that's currently being used for reference on this proposal, there is no recommendation for protection of critical habitat. There's nothing. They say, yes, we will protect critical habitat, but there's nothing specified, set out. They've said nothing. So if this happens, this thing changes over, and you vote this thing forward, they have no obligation to do anything than promise it. And that's a giant concern, because the Fox is therefore, you know, consultants that have written these documents are basically, the Fox is protecting the hen house, and the responsibility of the protection is falling on you to do that. So it's a difficult task. It's unfair. Actually, it is wholly unfair that there is no other agency, government agency, that will step up and help you with this. So please take it seriously.
Thank you. I have Matt, Mike, Dwayne, and Kevin, and let me know, Max, anybody else?
My name's Matt Parker. I live at 1114 Wilson Crescent, Squamish, BC. I just wanted to explore the trail that councillor Blackman-Wolff was meandering down just a moment further, as to how this land could be developed according to the OCP. According to this current OCP, someone could purchase this land outright, build a mansion on it, fence off the entire area, and then we would be left with none of the restoration of habitat and ecosystems, and none of the trail amenities that this would come with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Nelson, and I have Dwayne Crass, Kevin Schumaker, and Maxime.
My name is Mike Nelson. I live at 2135 Ridgeway Crescent. I am the principal of Cascade Environmental. We were retained by Polygon to conduct the bio inventory of the site, prepare a habitat balance, and various environmental services. We've talked a lot about the habitat compensation, fisheries, values, and I think I'm going to leave that one alone. I think enough has been said about that topic. But I like to talk about the critical habitat, Pacific water shoe for just a bit. Biology is kind of a, it's an inexact science. We deal in probabilities. And we look at those numbers, you know, where does this 100-meter number come from? You know, obviously just one picked out of thin air. So 50 meters is what's considered, from the stream, is considered the critical habitat. Another 50 meters is to protect that critical habitat. Now, 50 meters comes from studies that show that Pacific water shoes have never been found farther than 50 meters from a creek. 95% of captures of Pacific water shoe are found within 30 meters of a creek. So there's a diminishing return the further you get away from a creek. So if you say 95 is acceptable, then 30 meters it. If you want to get 100%, well, you never quite get 100%. You'll get 9, 9.9, but you'll never get 100. If you want 100, you better make that 200-meter buffer. It's just the way statistics work, the probabilities. You can't get zero, you can't get 100%. So the 50-meter protection is basically a buffer on the habitat itself. It does not have to be habitat, but it has to be vegetated to protect the habitat. I don't know if everybody walked into a clear-cut forest where it's clear-cut and a forest just starts. As soon as you went into the forest, it's dried out. Why? Because there's no shading from the existing trees. So grassland is not suitable buffer of the habitat. It has to be planted out. Now, the, our plan right now for the habitat, Pacific water shoe, is to, is based on the advice we've seen from Environment Canada, that the golf course itself is not considered critical habitat. So what our plan is, is to provide a buffer on that golf course land by planting it to protect the habitat itself. So our buffers are not 50 meters. They range from 50 to 30 meters, depending on where it is on the, from the development. But elsewhere on the golf course, we have achieved the 100 meters. Where we're proposing the habitat compensation measures, we're going to see well over 100 meters in those areas. The other thing I just wanted to mention, so the idea was then that our, to compensate for the intrusions into those protective buffers, is to provide the wetland compensation package that's being proposed. And that includes 20 acres of restoration, 1 hectare of wetland, and 7 hectares of repairing and habitat. Now, there's been a comment that it's up to district council, protect it, because the Species at Risk Act does not apply to private lands without an order in council of the, order of private council by the Canadian government. Well, that's true as far as the act itself is concerned, but to create the compensation habitat, we will need two things, as well as third reading from this council. We'll need a Water Sustainability Act approval from the province, and we'll need an authorization from DFO. Now, it's been said that they're no longer the table. Well, if you have applied for an application to DFO and MOE, let me assure you, it is not a walk in the park. They are reviewing, they are reviewing the application. Recently, DFO came up with a policy, since their change of the legislation, which says they're only protecting fish, was it only protecting fish, not the fish habitat? Well, the DFO policy is the fish includes the habitat as well. Fish process, the life process includes the habitat. So the legislations change, the players have changed a bit, but they are reviewing, there are reviewing files. So under the Water Sustainability Act, under the province, that'll be, for any time we work near water, or connect to a water source, which will be our habitat compensation works, we'll have to make an application to them. They refer to First Nations, they'll refer to Environment Canada, they'll refer to their own Species at Risk biologist. If they do not agree with our compensation plan, they will let us know, and they will not approve it. It's as simple as that. As far as the habitat compensation plan, I included a few rudimentary sketches in the last document sent to you, just to give you a sort of flavor of what we're trying to think of. It hasn't been designed in any, in any detail yet, but it's not simply, let's build it down and flood everything. It will be an excavation. We will not have it within, there's no way we can have it within 15 meters of an adjacent property, because we cannot encumber an adjacent property with the compensation measures we're proposing. DFO will not allow it, and the province will not allow it. We'll have to keep it a certain distance away from those properties, because we'll be encumbering their properties. We just can't do that.
Yeah. So, Mike, your five minutes are up. We don't, I don't want to limit your speaking, but I might ask you to come back. But councillor Shempel does have a question for you.
Sure.
Thanks, Mike. I really appreciate your expertise and your experience on this file. And I just had a quick question. You speak to the oversight of DFO and fisheries. I'm just wondering what happened then? Everybody speaks to the golf course as being a disaster of fisheries habitat, and we've had numerous missteps and oversights in maintaining this as fisheries habitat. So if that is the case, how did it get to the point where everybody promises us that this will be overseen? And yet, this land has been basically disregarded as far as fisheries habitat and sustainability?
Yeah. That's a tough question, but I guess the short answer is, there was bonding associated with all the works. When the golf course stopped operating in 2010, I think it was, DFO actually seized the bond. And with that money, they did the studies on the smalls, actually retained us to do the studies on the smalls leaving the system, which showed that the system was in drastic decline.
That's actually good.
So actually, there is some money, there was some money, because we didn't spend it all. It went into DFO's coffers, and I guess it went to habitat function somewhere else, because we didn't see it.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have more to say, Mike, come up after the last remaining speakers, but I have Dwayne Crass, and Kevin Schumaker, and Maxime. And is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing?
I'm just really sure. I'm just gonna, you know, what this, going again back to what Spencer had mentioned, is the land packages, they're situated just south and west of what you could call an economic driver. There are people coming here to access the trails. A lot of them access it through our networks. Several speakers have pointed out the problems at Perth, and how they don't necessarily want the problems coming south to them, but the problems are, they're there. We need to work on it. There's plans in place. They're not going to happen overnight in any neighborhood here. But without a plan for that land that would include connectivity through other portions of land into the trails, we will lose an economic driver. That, the area of the trails north of the Chima Lands, and south and east of the Alice Lake Park, it would be impossible to access that area without having to go up north and then through the southern portion of Alice Lake, or heading up the Forest Service Road to access them through a long gravel road. This is a developer here that is providing an amenity that, you know, aside from ripping apart a dollar or dollar value per door, they're offering a park that is essentially priceless, and not something that another developer is in a position to offer. You know, you look at the Holden Group, they're not ready yet. Of course, they need to rezone. They're waiting to see how things go. I think that package of three different properties could be done quite properly with some foresight, but also having a leadership role being presented here, rather than coming back to it ad hoc. Tantalus Road, north of Dowood Drive, was supposed to have an easement for a trail. You can actually see it on Google Maps, but that has since been claimed by private landowners as they put their fifth wheel or trailer there. Kintyre Drive itself actually has a provincial or a crown sliver of land between two homes that have since been co-shared by two homeowners. Without a forward plan to have connectivity throughout neighborhoods, we're further enforcing our need and dependence on vehicles. Always a concern of parking and other people's cars and other people's parking, but, you know, we've got to start looking inward on what we're doing. The bears are here because of us. The bears are there not necessarily just because of the land. We're attracting them. You know, downtown condos are not providing these kind of amenities. You know, you can say in Phil, all you want, but you know, you've got to look at the greater good here. This is a win for the community when the development has gone through many hoops. And for someone to say that some of the council are not going to be here next year, it's not really their decision. They've sat through a lot of these meetings. There is a councillor here that announced that he was moving, yet voted his opinion in the last reading. So it, you know, it's fair that these people are the ones making the decision. They've lived with us, they've sat through the meetings. To push this off, you're going to have more meetings. You know, there's what more? I think this process has been extremely fair. I think they've been extremely patient, and I thank council and staff for working through it properly at every step of the way.
Thank you very much. I have Kevin, and then Maxime, and that's the end of my list. If you do want to speak, Pam?
Thank you. Sorry. I just wanted to address the comment about purchasing the land not subject to the rezoning. Just a bit of history. We entered into the land purchase agreement with the previous owner in January of 2016. We spent six months doing our due diligence. I mean, that's something that we like to think we're very good at. The culmination of that, working with staff, was a preliminary idea of what may happen on that land, always with the idea that we'd be developing the fairways. We took that to council committee in June of 2016, again, prior to us buying the land. The direction we were given at that time is that we should go through a process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maxime, and then Pam.
I just want to kind of comment on what's being said through many other speakers. And it's been mentioned that to maintain the land or the green space that's going to be left after development, if it goes through, would be about $150,000 per year. So that's the number that has been mentioned. However, the other option was to keep it as a green space, and I'm assuming was to buy back the land and then developing it into green tourism for Squamish to use. I'm wondering how much more money would that be if it was suggested that in the budget, we don't even have $150,000 in the first place to maintain that land? And then, I don't know, there's a few people, without the entire three hours or four hours that we've been here now, have mentioned that there's no real market for new housing in Squamish. I am also going to mention that those people must not have been on the renting market for a very, very, very long time. There's, if you're trying to rent something in Squamish, it is almost impossible, and everybody's just waiting to actually buy something for themselves that is affordable. And if there's not more housing, then obviously prices are going to keep going up. Also, for parking use, it's really easy to point out the blame to like Squamish not having the road infrastructure, or developer not giving enough parking space. But in Squamish, I don't have the run numbers, there's no study on that, but I'm assuming that at least 80% of all garages are not used as parking space, which they should. So it's really easy to put the blame on somebody else, but sometimes our own behaviors are also resulting in the parking mess that we're seeing in Squamish by not using the parking space as they use, they are designed to be used. And then, lastly, it's been mentioned as well, but everybody's really happy to have a home that used to be previously, most likely, forest in Squamish, and now that the development's been built, well, there's a, none of my backyard mentality that now that I've got my home, do not come here and disturb what I've actually achieved for myself. And I think it's a little bit selfish for future generation that are trying to have the privilege to live here, or stay here for the people that actually have been born and raised, and trying to get out of the renting market at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam is my last speaker.
Pam Kostrowski, 41050 Tantalus Road, Squamish. To Jason's question about what else land use could happen to this, or if somebody else bought it, or how that would work, in delving into all these agencies and talking to a million people and finding out what would be possible, there is a federal, I forget exactly what it's called, it's a federal land gift program. So landowners can gift us the land, or could gift a district the land. And then there's a federal tax credit program on that program. So that, that's an option to any landowner to gift land and get a tax credit for it.
Thank you. I have Rob, and...
Am I the last speaker?
I kind of hope so, but...
Hi, yes, my name is Robert Forsyth. On Faith Road in Brackendale. I've been a resident of Squamish for, since I was six years old. I've been a resident of Squamish for, since I was six years old. So I used to actually go and mountain bike into the areas that we're talking about here, way before the golf course was ever built. I was here before McDonald's was built, and I was like, I was here a long time, right? And we've been traveling the trails. And I remember the first time I actually stood before council, I was 14 years old, and I was part of the junior council, and we were making proposal to the district, saying that the students, the kids, just didn't have enough things to do in Squamish, not enough activities. And one of the things that we promoted, and one of the things that was on the list, was the swimming pool, skateboard parks, ice arena, water park, and trails. This was before Sorko was even developed. And I remember about four or five years after that proposal went through, Sorko was developed, and we started building all these infrastructure, all these trails, and just really expanding Squamish, and it just really grew. And I've seen the population grow from, I think we were like 6,000 population to now almost 20,000 population. Now, not even the amount of people that are visiting here, but we don't think we have the statistics, but let's just assume that we have 20,000 to 40,000 new visitors here daily using our infrastructure. And currently, our tax base is all being generated from all these new developments, but they all appear to be condos, or multiplexes, four-story buildings, and all focusing on downtown Squamish. I am a builder by trade. I also run Facebook groups. I have Squamish Area Job Seekers. I've got Squamish Housing for Rentals. It's about 9,000 members of local Squamish people, and I see the amount of traffic that's happening, people looking for places to rent, people looking for jobs. And most of the development that I'm seeing is not creating any sort of long-term stability. There's no ability for the property to be developed 20 years from now, or 10 years from now. There's no expandability. Vale Cliff was built, all the basement suites were incomplete, so that the homeowner could spend the time to put sweat equity into it, and eventually build up their, their, their equity as a, as a community member. And that's sort of what made us a strong community. This is one of the only developments that I've seen that actually has single-family dwellings. I'm an independent contractor. I may be doing drywall, or painting, or tile, or framing, or forming, but I don't even qualify for the majority of the large developments that are taking place in this town, because I can't afford the bonding. I don't have, you know, $200,000 in the bank to cover the staffing that's required to handle a lot of, a lot of these big projects. This project seems to me that there's a lot of single-family dwellings, places where someone could build a development that could be expanded in a later time. There's the ability to build out more areas. I think that it's a good idea to keep that land, to actually do something with that land, because since I was a little kid, and I've been here for a long time, I've gotten onto the property maybe about 25 times, including when we built Garibaldi at Squamish, because I was one of the contractors that was doing the original golf course development of the hotel. I was the painting contractor there. So when the road was first built, I remember the road being built. And I remember it being all wet, because it was the low area of the ground, the highway was higher. All this was lowlands that was basically swept, all the excess water that came from the highlands. But we used to have access from the highlands down through trails. I used to ride my bike from the highlands, right down across the highway through, into Brackendale, and then down along the Dyke System. And I remember when they closed access to that, the property was closed, and we didn't have access to that. And I remember when the golf course was opened, and they cleaned up a lot of the land, because all that land was all chopped-down trees, and, and all, it wasn't like, it's not a forest that you guys would consider to be a forest. It was all clear-cutted, probably 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, completely clear-cutted. And all the stuff that we have on there is deciduous trees that are just sort of, just grew sort of naturally by itself, from air, the air blowing the stuff around, not actually any proper plan. And this is a hub in the center of a really decent location. I think that the park idea, the idea of, of a bit better master planning for, you know, not just condos, not just big buildings, but some single-family dwellings in combination of, of access of trails, I agree with one of the speakers talking about a little bit disappointed that there's not commercial, not as much commercial, to actually create a reason for being there. But in, in general, I'd have to say that I'm actually, I'm actually for the, the proposal. I'd like to see it go through in the long term, just because that area has sat for 35 years of my witnessing, doing really nothing beneficial for the community. I mean, the golf course was a small benefit, but you didn't get 20,000 people going down there. I see as a connector, being a lot better a benefit, and actually just cleaning up an area that really needed to be cleaned up. Personally, I would prefer to see a better service secondary access road from Brackendale through that area up into the highlands. Another one of the people were talking about if the barrier went, or if the, one of the major flood hazards that we've actually identified recently, which actually affects a lot of Brack and a lot of Squamish. That's kind of where we always, I mean, we used to be able to get up to the highlands from there. And that's where we anticipated eventually would be developed, a road from Brackendale connecting across the highway, and then up, up the hill. But that never happened, right? But that, I don't know, I can't really say anything negative. The only thing really negative I can say about it is the, the idea that the highway access, because it's a kind of ludicrous, you think that anybody that's, is going to be going down back into Squamish to go shopping, grocery shopping, doing anything that's going to be in Squamish, they're not going to be turning northbound into the highway to Brackendale. So Tantalus is definitely going to have a lot of more traffic, unless the highway intersection is sort of dealt with, right? And that, that's my main concern about the whole project, but I, I don't see any single-family dwellings where I can actually go and bid on a job and actually, you know, hope to get it. You know, it's just not, it's not there. Anyway, that was my, my say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I don't see any more hands. Council, do you have any remaining burning questions? Staff, have, have, have we answered? Have you, you think, I don't...
I just want to say, staff, who's going to afford the housing there?
If you're going to speak, you have to come to the podium.
We need a motion to stand first.
We've got three minutes.
Okay, I'm Irina Erdos. I live at 1010 Dale's Place. I, I'm just wondering, we're talking about all of this building, but who's going to be able to afford living over there? You know, what we need in Squamish is more low-cost housing, and we need it more central to amenities, not, not up on, up there, or down in the swampy areas.
Thank you.
Who's going to afford it?
Thank you. I don't see any more hands. Don't see any more questions from council. We're missing two council members, and I know that they're online watching right now. So with that, I'll look for a motion to terminate the meeting, moved by Council Blackman-Wolff. Oh, I have to say a few things first, don't I? I have to ask three times. For a second time, is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing? And for a third time, is there anyone who would like to speak at the public hearing? There being no further submissions, I will declare this public hearing closed. At the conclusion of the public hearing, council can't receive any more information. So please channel communications through district staff. And I now declare the public hearing closed. Thank you very much. As always, I'm always very impressed with the respectfulness and thoughtfulness of the community, so well done. Very much appreciate everyone coming out and speaking their mind. And with that, I will look for a motion to terminate the meeting. Moved by Council Blackman-Wolff, seconded by Council Elliot. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed if any, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone.